Good evening. My name is Brielle Morton and I'm a year four student at the Academy of Health Sciences at Prince George's Community College. I am a member of the National Society for Collegiate Scholars and I am an ambassador for the Middle College National Consortium. I am the first high school student and the first dual enrollment student to ever participate in the HBCU MI Summer Internship at the Naval Research Lab. I have earned a total of sixty college credits over my four-year tenure at the Academy of Health Sciences, including in molecular biology and honors expository writing. And I have been able to maintain a GPA of 4.0. I enjoy giving musical and poetry performances and I also enjoy giving speeches such as this one. I have been nominated for and received scholarships to the National Student Leadership Conference for International Diplomacy and the Global Navigator Scholarship to study abroad in Madrid, Spain. My long-term goal is to become a research scientist and to eventually open my own organization to get more women of color in STEM. I am a proud student at the Academy of Health Sciences at Prince George's Community College and I am ready to receive my high school diploma and associate's degree on May 25th, 2017. Now I would like to welcome you to the September 8th, 2016 Prince George's County Board of Education meeting. Highlights this event will include the news break Judging a Book by Its Pixels. Additionally, under new business, the Board of Education will address the Chesapeake Math and IT Elementary South Public Charter School application. Please continue to check www.pgcps.org for upcoming Board of Education meetings and events. And now, the September 8th, 2016 Board of Education meeting will begin. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, friends and citizens, and welcome to the September 8th, 2016 Board Meeting of the Prince George's County Board of Education. How about another hand for Ms. Brielle Morton? Now, if I'm not mistaken, just to show that not only the overall brilliance of Prince George's County Public Schools, that Ms. Morton's mom is here in the audience as one of our own teachers at John Hanson Montessori. Mom, stand up. Give us a wave, mom. All right. All right, friends, before we begin, as always, I'd like to remind everyone to turn off your wireless devices or put them on vibrate so that they will not interfere with the microphone and tapings of the meeting. And I'll begin by asking Mrs. Roche, would you please lead us in the board prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Oh God, we pray to administer that which is just in all educational policies, being ever mindful of your guidance, steer us to action with love, wisdom, and understanding.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Ms. Park, would you please call the roll?
Thank you. Dr. Anderson? Mr. Blocker?
Here.
Ms. Boston? Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Ms. Saps?
Good evening.
Ms. Eubanks? Ms. Hernandez?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs?
Here.
Ms. Canteros-Grady?
Present.
Ms. Roche?
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mr. Wallace?
I'm present.
Ms. Williams? Dr. Eubanks?
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. As we move to approve the board meeting agenda, Mr. Burrows?
I just wanted to let the public know, Dr. Anderson's sister passed away, so she was in executive session. She's on her way to South Carolina, that's why she's not at the meeting currently.
Thank you. You want to make a motion while you're there?
Yes, I would. I would like to move our non-agenda items speakers up to item 4.1 to follow our agenda items speakers.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Ms. Saps, was that your motion? It's been moved to second to move agenda items, speakers for non-agenda items up to agenda items under 3.0. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. You have another?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to move that agenda item 11.1, follow-up from the August 25th Board Meeting. Right, the follow-up item which is actually in the Head Start Policy Committee minutes be also moved up to 4.1 Head Start as part of the Head Start Update Discussion Item.
Second.
So you just want to include the?
The minutes.
The minutes as part of the discussion and part of the update? All right, I think we could probably do that without needing to move it to the agenda item because as part of the discussion, we can refer to it if we need to, but either way.
These are coming from down there. Just saying.
So do you want it to be a discussion item or do you want to? All right, it's been moved to second. Is there any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. Seeing no other changes to the agenda, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Some move.
It's been moved to second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed?
Mr. Chair, I opposed it. I had an amendment to the minutes.
An amendment to?
Minutes.
The minutes, right, okay, let me, all right, I'm gonna get to the minutes.
Okay, I thought that's what you said.
All right, we're moving on to minutes. So I'm gonna put a motion on the floor to adopt it and then we'll take amendments. All right.
Your men first.
It's been moved. We have a second? Moved to second, Ms. Jacobs?
Thank you, I'd like to amend the minutes to read as follows, and this is under 4.8. The Board requested the administration to post a testing schedule identifying the tests that will be used in monitoring student performances in reading and mathematics in grades one and two, and that's to the August 25th minutes.
Ask folks to give a chance to go to? Could you repeat?
Sure. The Board requested the administration to post a testing schedule identifying the tests that were to be used in monitoring student performance in reading and mathematics in grades one and two.
All right, that's amended for folks to remember that discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? Is that jive with everybody's recollection of the minutes? If so, I'll put it up for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Any other amendments to the minutes? If not, we will approve the minutes as modified. All those in favor approving the minutes as modified, please say aye. All those opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. We'll now move on to a news break on item 2.6 Judging a Book by Its Pixels.
Seventy-six hours of reading. And I think you all know who she is, so maybe you should introduce her. Her name is? Lilia Russo, sixth grader here at Glass Manor. Congratulations, principal.
Without a doubt, the newest rock star at Glass Manor Elementary is, of all things, a digital bookworm. Yes, you see, unlike other reading contest winners, Lily never actually opened a book. All her reading was done online, thanks to a company called MyOn.
So when we built MyOn, we built it thinking about you guys. Thinking about kids in their homes, in the computer lab, in their classrooms, with iPads, with their telephone, with the computer. All we wanted to do is make sure that everybody can read all the time. And guess what? You guys did it.
One great thing we love about MyOn is that our children have access to literacy regardless of electricity is running, if they got a device. So you could download your books, save them, and read them when you cannot connect to the web.
MyOn, my own digital library, not only has a million available titles, but also a carefully crafted program now in seventy-five of the county's Title I schools that keeps students interested in reading and encourages their success. After logging in and determining where their interests lie, chapter books, scary books, nonfiction, and their ability level, what lexile do I fall into? Children then head to a dashboard of books that can literally come alive.
Soon, the prince came upon the sleeping rulers.
It's not happening.
The legend is true. The spell of sleep still holds.
It's great because children love technology and those children who wouldn't normally pick up a book, they are excited to get on a computer or get on their smartphone or get on whatever device they have at home and read.
Add in a meter that measures time spent reading, quizzes to test comprehension, and the chance to write a review for the benefit of others, and it is no wonder that children once reluctant to pick up a book are down with MyOn.
You told me that you didn't like to read books. You didn't like picking up a book. Tell me about that. Why didn't you like it?
Because it was kind of hard and I didn't want to read. And now that I saw MyOn, I love to read. Like, when you look for a book, sometimes you can go to browse and then pick a category and then it comes up, the book.
It's about when three people go on a camping trip and the volcanoes are dormant.
Oh, it's dormant, but then what happens?
And then it started to erupt.
My gosh, and what did they do?
They went hiding, they were trying to find shelter.
Did they make it? Did they survive?
Yes.
Give it a rating. You're gonna be the teacher, you're giving it a grade.
Ten.
A ten, all right.
Ranking last summer's best readers, thanks to MyOn's monitors, may have resulted in awards to children like Mother Jones Kayla Romero Jerome for sixty-seven hours spent reading, and schools like Calverton Elementary for reading one thousand seven hundred and eighty-one books. But the most important numbers were those tallying personal growth and what they might mean for the years ahead.
Kayla, who came in third place, she was reading below grade level. And she told me during spring break, my mom told me that I was gonna do a lot of reading, and I did. And Kayla, at the end of the school year, was reading on grade level.
After a child reads five to six books, a benchmark assessment comes up where it actually assesses their comprehension skills, so we're able to monitor their lexile level reading in MyOn. And we use that to compare it to the lexile levels that we have in Prince George's County for looking at our children being proficient readers.
What I'm really proud of in PG County, and we know that achievement levels are rising and the opportunity for kids to have more access to books and more access to reading, what I think that really means is it's gonna quantify to their futures. And PG County kids have read almost a million books since the inception online. That's pretty powerful.
So, for students who need convincing that reading rocks, would like a library at their fingertips, and maybe win a gift card and a certificate or two, listen to Hady Barnacus, who just met Romeo and Juliet, thanks to MyOn.
I'll tell them that MyOn is good 'cause then when you don't have nothing to do, you could read on MyOn and then it lets you learn more. Like, you can learn about reading more and more.
Congratulations to all the MyOn readers for showing that you can sometimes judge a book, if not by its cover, than by its number of pixels.
We love MyOn!
For Channels 96 and 38, this is Dave Zarin.
All right, again, great work that happens with our technology and our literacy program each and every day. Thank you for that report. I'll now move on to the report of the chair. I will begin as always by honoring the life and memory of our loved ones and add, as my other board colleagues do as well, our thoughts and prayers to the family of Dr. Beverly Anderson, and also remember the loss of Dr. Sancho Scoopda, tag, math, and science teacher at Green Belt Middle School. And I will ask you to join me in a moment of silence to honor Dr. Scoopda. Thank you, friends. Move on to my report. This month marks attendance awareness. During the month of September, the Office of Pupil Personnel Services in schools across the district will promote the importance of daily attendance and raise awareness about the prevention of chronic absenteeism. School achievement begins with regular attendance. We expect all students to come to school every day on time and be prepared for academic success. We know that showing up, as they say, is half the battle. And if we get our kids to school every day, we know that they will be prepared for success. I want to congratulate Buck Lodge Middle School's Science Special Education Teacher, Elizabeth Lazaro, who was recently, let's give her a, yeah. Friends are clapping on her quick. Ms. Lazaro was recently selected as a recipient of President Obama's Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. Ms. Lazaro was among two hundred and thirteen K-12 science and mathematics educators from across the nation who were selected by a panel of distinguished scientists, mathematicians, and educators for this prestigious award. As a winner of the Presidential Honor, Ms. Lazaro received a certificate signed by President Obama along with a $10,000 award from the National Science Foundation. Congratulations again, Ms. Lazaro. Before I conclude, I'm gonna make a statement about our Head Start program. During today's Board of Education meeting, we will be updated about the current status of Head Start and have a chance to take questions from our board members. And we'll talk about the essential steps taken to ensure that our Head Start students continue to receive high-quality education and services this year and beyond. At the same time, we recognize that a close review and examination of what led to this situation must take place. As many of you know, disciplinary actions were announced last week involving several individuals who were mentioned in the Administration for Children and Families Report. We believe this is an important first step towards keeping student safety as our main priority. In order for this to continue to occur, we must continue to provide full transparency. Our students, families, and community need to understand, just as we all do, how this happened and how we plan to move forward. We must examine not only our policies, procedures, and actions, but we must also take stock of the underlying culture in our system and how it must transform. I've asked Dr. Maxwell and his administration to provide a full review and public-written debriefing of the events listed in the Administration for Children and Families Report as part of a broader discussion of Head Start in Prince George's County, past, present, and future. I will also invite representatives from the federal government's Administration for Children and Families to address the Board of Education at an upcoming public meeting. Their external review sign light on an area where we must clearly improve. We believe it would be helpful for the board and public to hear not only how they arrived at their conclusions, but their recommendations for avoiding future occurrences. Our focus continues to be on a smooth and successful year for children of Head Start and in all of our schools. I'll conclude my chair's report, as always, reminding folks of upcoming meetings and announcements. On September 15th, 2016, at 6:00 PM, we have a Capital Improvement Program public hearing. On September 22nd, at 1:00 PM, a board work session. And on September 24th, 2016, at 9:00 AM, College and Career Readiness Summit at Northwestern High School. I will also, this Saturday, at Charles Herbert Flowers High School at 10:00 AM. At 8:00 AM, we will be launching the start of our Family Institute. We're very excited about that. There's been a lot of publicity about that, and we are very honored to have the esteemed Marion Wright Edelman and actor Hill Harper will be joining us on Saturday, so please do join us and come out and celebrate the incredible progress and successes that we are making. So please join us for that special event on Saturday. I'll remind folks that persons interested in speaking at meetings of the board must register with the Office of the Board of Education two and a half hours prior to the meeting by calling 301-952-6115. That concludes my chair's remarks, and I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for the Chief Executive Officer's report.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks and members of the board. Good evening. My remarks begin where yours left off with information about the inaugural Family Institute Conference, so I won't repeat that. I'll see you at eight o'clock on Saturday morning. I also want to note that we're working towards students, another way that we're working towards student success is through our new Workforce Diversity Task Force. So as you've shown, that students benefit from having teachers from diverse racial and ethnic backgrounds who understand their culture and serve as positive role models. The task force will play a vital role in this effort by analyzing staffing and student enrollment data and current workforce diversity initiatives. The group will then recommend a plan to address our employment needs. Through the task force, we will engage key stakeholders in developing strategies and solutions that support our goal of outstanding achievement for all of our children. And in the next part of my remarks, I'm gonna be doing some recognitions and in making it easy for us to do pictures and things, I'm going to do the acknowledgements and then I'm gonna call some people up separately, two groups, to do pictures. So regarding the outstanding achievement that I spoke of, I would like to acknowledge two special guests who have joined us this evening. First, Colonel Brad Hoagland, the former commander of the 11th Wing and Joint Air Base Andrews. I've worked with him since my return here to Prince George's County, and he has been dedicated not only to the service of our country and to the community of Prince George's County in which Joint Base Andrews sits. We've done a lot of great collaborative work together, and I am extremely thankful, as I know this board is, for the service that Colonel Hoagland has provided to the Prince George's County Public Schools and our students. And so, we'll bring him up in a minute, and we're also going to recognize Colonel John Tiger, the current Joint Base Commander. I had the pleasure of attending the change of command ceremony this summer. Both men have been and will continue to be exceptional partners to our school system, and we thank them for our service to our schools and to our community and to our country. And we'll take pictures and I'll have plaques for you in just a moment, so thank you. Tonight, I also have the pleasure of recognizing eight schools where staff has gone above and beyond to integrate the arts into their instructional program. These model arts integration schools have created an arts-friendly environment that enhances instruction across the curriculum. And I will also have John Shashini, the officer for the Department of Arts Integration, and his staff, join us as well, but again, we're gonna do it in sequence when I finish reading the names. So, as I call your name in school, when we get ready to come down, here's the people that I want to come down, because we're going to do, it says here in my notes, to call you one at a time and stay front and center for a photo op. I'm sure Randy will have some additional instruction for us at that moment, as he usually does. So, in a minute, we're gonna recognize Judy Adams, the principal of Akikika Academy and of course, that school. Dorothy, thank you. Dorothy Clowers, hang on, we're gonna do, let me read all the names. Or do you want me to have the board come up and do them one at a time? I thought I would just read the names and then they can come down one at a time. Or do you want it all to come at one time, Randy? Thank you, sir. Everybody hear that? We're gonna all come down in a few minutes. Dorothy Clowers, principal of William Pecko Elementary School. Nina Latimore, principal of Capitol Heights Elementary School. Dr. Trevor Everard, principal of Edward Felge Elementary School. Pamela Lucas, principal of Thomas G. Pollen Creative and Performing Arts Academy. Matthew McCray, principal Benjamin D. Floy Creative and Performing Arts Academy. Carleen Murray, principal of Northwestern High School. And Lynn Stu, the principal of Beacon Heights Elementary School. Through our network of fifty-six schools, I think actually we're at sixty-four now as we open school. John, are you in here waving? Sixty-four? My notes have to be updated. Sixty-four schools. These schools are the driving force for sharing arts integration expertise throughout our school system, using arts integration to engage students and impact school success. Congratulations to all of you. We're gonna do the military first, if that's okay with everyone, and then we're gonna have our arts folks come down for pictures. Colonel Hoagland, Colonel Tiger? Colonel Hoagland, Colonel Tiger.
Mr. Chair, this is going to lose my report.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm going to do public comment at this time. I'm going to start, I'm going to start, I'm going to do public comment. I'll let you guys come in when we come to the point in the agenda.
Colleagues, I just wanted to recognize, we have two colleagues that, former colleagues in the audience, Rosalyn Johnson, District One, Pat Fletcher, District Six. And so I want to thank you for coming. I joined the Board with you on it, so I appreciate all the lessons that you've taught me, and I wanted to recognize you. And also, which will be very quick, I wanted to once again thank Dr. Davis for appointing some very talented principals in the Eighth School Board District. And also, I see Dr. Maria Smith, and they work very well together, Dr. Davis and Dr. Smith, to ensure that we have the best talent in District Eight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Recognize someone?
Yes. So I want to recognize the two lovely ladies sitting right here. Jennifer Cardon is the president of the Prince George's Regional Association of Student Governments, which is our county student government, so that means that she represents all elementary, middle, and high school students. And I would also like to point out Aleah Hennington, who's our former Peeggrass president and who is the president of Parkdale High School in Riverdale, Maryland. Thank you, guys, for being out tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you for our distinguished guests and for everyone who's joined us today. We truly appreciate it. And now we will move on to public speaking. And before we begin, as always, I'll remind folks that you have been registered to speak in a public comment forum where the Board of Education will listen to your comments. The Board will not address your comments. All registered speakers will have three minutes to make their presentation. At the sound of, of the buzzer, speakers may complete that sentence only. Registered speakers may not relinquish any part of their speaking time to another registered or unregistered individual. And, and we ask that if you have any of your comments that are in writing, that you leave a copy along with us for the record, and adherence to these rules would help us move along smoothly. And at that, we will begin the process. We will start with public comment on Agenda Item four point one, the Head Start Update. And I will start with Ms. Rosalyn Johnson. Ms. Hill, could you make sure she's close and she's got the mic nice and close?
Hi, I am Rosalyn Johnson. I am a Prince Georgian. I attended all school levels in this county. I taught for three decades in this county. I was elected to the school board in this county. Because of my lifelong involvement with the school system, I am fully aware of the ebb and flow of this county and our school system. I lived through the tenures of superintendents from Hassel to the current C.E.O. I lived and taught through the strife of a segregated school system. But through it all, I believe that my highest calling was educating children. I have committed my entire adult life to PGCPs. Because of this, school system taught me how to think, how to learn, and how to evaluate every aspect of my living. I come from a family that has always fought wrongs. From my great-grandfather, great-great-grandfather, who fought the cavalry and was killed for it. My great-grandmother, child of a slave, who wanted an education and left South, North Carolina to go to Ohio to get that education. My father, who was imprisoned at Fort Sill in Oklahoma because he refused to be drafted and sit on a segregated military bus. Thus, in nineteen sixty-three, I organized a civil rights protest in Baltimore City. Hundreds and hundreds of us were jailed. And when Governor Tauss heard that hundreds more were joining, buses were coming to join the protest, he ended it. I will end H.B. eleven oh seven. I will fight for it. I am saying to you, those who know me, know about how tenacious I am about fighting for change for PGCPs. The dome of silence that keeps employees from telling the truth for fear of retribution or loss of employment. No N.R.L.L.R., N.L.R.B. due process. None of this is happening right now in Prince George's County. Every promise that has been made has been failed to be realized. The time has come. Prince George's County residents, we will take back our school system. We will ensure that our children, whether they're in Head Start, whether they're in elementary or high school, that our children are thought of first, and we will no longer endure what is happening in this county. I pledge to you today to fight to the end, to the end, to make certain that PGCPs becomes what it was destined to be.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your service and for your advocacy. Next up is Mr. David Kahn.
Roz, you're a hard act to follow. It's gratifying to know that our three and four-year-old students will be getting some sort of Head Start this year, but we won't be offering it to them. Instead, an interim contractor selected by the Head Start Agency will be getting the money that we would have gotten in PGCPs, and they will be running a Head Start program. Now, the politicians involved, starting with Rashern Baker, our county executive, who's taken over our schools, basically, and the leadership of our school system would like us to concentrate on the fact that these kids are getting Head Start so that we will ignore the failure of leadership that has taken place over the last year in the Head Start program. So let's look at the facts. I'm looking at the letter from the Administration for Children and Families. Apparently, this stuff started back in December or earlier. But on February twenty-ninth, the Administration prepared a document that set out all these deficiencies in our Head Start program. Our leadership got that on March first. They were supposed to have a month to fix it up, but they gave them six weeks instead. So they knew at the very latest, and normally people know long before the deficiency report comes out, but they, at the very latest, knew on March first what they had to do to clean up our act. The feds came back and reviewed on April twelfth through fourteenth. To put it in very simple educational terms, we flunked the test. But they didn't cut off our grant. Instead, they gave us another two months. And on June tenth through seventeenth, they came back again and reviewed, and we flunked the test again. We flunked the makeup test, okay? So it's nice to hear these beautiful words of concern for our most vulnerable and youngest students. But words, or even what's in their heart, and I don't doubt that you care about these kids, but it has to be followed up with action, and you fail to follow up with action, okay? And it's time for you to say goodbye. I love you all as people. I consider you very engaging and dedicated people, all of you. But it's time to fall on your sword. Now, I am wrong in one respect. When this whole scheme was set up to have appointed Board members and an appointed superintendent, I said, nothing will happen unless they embarrass Rashern Baker. Well, they embarrassed him, and he didn't care. I hope everybody here continues to care. Thank you.
Thank you, as always, Mr. Kahn. Next up is Pat Fletcher.
Point of clarification. Do I get the same courtesy that other elected officials and former elected officials have when they come up to speak? They, they get a, I think it's five minutes that they get. My speech is not five minutes, but it's a little over three.
Please go as quick as, there is three minutes, please. I'm not going to stop you too soon, but I, but please go, go quickly as possible.
I will, I will. Okay. As stated before, I served on the Board of Education, two thousand six through, through two thousand ten. It was decided by my colleagues at that time that due to the school system being so large, that each Board member would be assigned departments to, to cover, have a meetings with the respective staff, and report back to the Board. I was chair of the Personnel Committee and the Board Liaison to Head Start. The Head Start Grant mandated that there be a Board Liaison to Head Start. The Head Start program in Prince George's County, or should I say, was part of Prince George's County Public School System, although it's funded through a grant from the federal government, was a unique, is, is a unique program. And why is it so unique? Prince George's County is the only, only county Head Start program in the country where Head Start is intertwined in the school system, which means our Head Start babies have highly qualified teachers standing in front of them. The only program in the country. As the Board Liaison, I attended just about every parent council meeting. Head Start is governed by a parent council, which consists of parents who represent every school that house Head Start. The parent council brought to the council, would meet once a month, many concerns that they had at their respective schools, events that may be taking place, and announcement. This was important because the parent council was my eyes and ears as to what was going right in the Head Start program and what was going wrong in the Head Start program. Once, one time, they reported that they didn't have a nutritionist. The federal government mandates that Head Start has its own nutritionist. Because these parents brought it to the parent council, I brought it back to my colleagues, who in turn forced the superintendent, the then superintendent, to get a nutritionist for that school. So that is the importance of the parent liaison and Head Start. One of the parents of one of the incidents had made several attempts to conduct the Board Liaison to no avail. The Board Liaison is supposed to be available. Every parent on that council had my personal cell number. They used it, and I responded. The C.E.O., Chair, and Vice Chair and County Executive knew of these incidents way before they publicly acknowledged that they did, as the County Executive's office had scheduled a meeting with the parent, but she chose not to go because she felt a little threatened going by herself. How did the County Executive know? The way I figured, he had to be informed by the C.E.O., Chair, Vice Chair, or maybe due to these three enactions, the parents, parent contacted the office herself. Who knows? Now, contractor is coming to run the program, and staff has to reapply. That's a union issue, and hopefully the union will take care of it. But the bottom line is this. My babies, our babies, will be the loser. And I'm getting real emotional about this because these kids are the most vulnerable kids in the county. And you're, this contractor does not have to have highly qualified teachers in front of them. I could do, apply for the position and get it. I have no degree in teaching and wouldn't know where to start. You all are shameful because you're hurting my children. And you all, C.E.O., County Executive Chair, and Vice Chair need to go.
Thank you, Ms. Fletcher. Our next speaker is Donna Young.
Good evening. Since the last board meeting, I listened to Dr. Eubanks' interview where he stated, "I will not resign, as I have the support of the County Executive." I also read Dr. Maxwell's statement regarding the Head Start program, where he said, "Today, I've taken disciplinary action against six individuals directly involved in incidents cited in the administration of the Children and Family Report. These individuals will no longer be in front of any child in Prince George's County." I also listened to the interview of Ms. Demetrius Deal, who stated in eighteen years, her job was to report any problems, and she has never failed to do so. In listening to Ms. Deal's testimony, she not only stated that these, that she reported the incidents, that she had emails and documents to support her claims. So you must ask yourselves, why was she terminated? Now, let me say this, I don't know Ms. Deal, but I believe her story. From personal experience, I too was a whistleblower, reporting numerous illegal contracts issued to unqualified vendors, or they were steered without fair and open competition. I personally went to the C.E.O.'s office to show him evidence after discovering the purchasing director, previous CFO, previous COO, general counsel, and even some Board members were involved, involved or had direct knowledge of tens of millions of dollars are, are being wasted and spent without the benefits of our children. This administration will go to great lengths to destroy a whistleblower versus acknowledge their courage to come forth. They'd rather remove the whistleblower than the violators. After going directly to the deputy superintendent and the C.E.O., I was terminated using false documents that could have been easily spotted by the three blind mice. I could have never, this should have never made it past labor relations. My report, my reports, which were also ignored by the management chain for two years, and then the C.E.O., not only did the C.E.O. refuse to meet with me, my employee files were altered, bid documents were altered, emails and affidavits that provided unrefuted proof of corruption and violations I reported but ignored by this administration, my union, and the Board. Ms. Deal, I commend you and hope that you- Ms. Deal, I commend you and hope that you too have kept copies as I did. Although I am still in appeal, I pray my testimony gives others the courage to report the corruption and cover-up long embedded in this administration. Finally, I encourage the board members to read Isaiah 30. Verse 10 says, "They tell the seers not to see vision. They tell the prophets, 'Do not tell us what is right. Tell us nice things. Tell us lies.'" Verse 12 through 13 says, "Because you despise what I tell you and trust instead in oppression and lies, calamity will come upon you suddenly. Like the bulging wall, it will collapse on you." Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Young. Tanya Wingfield is next.
It is nice to see that the board decided to add a discussion item back on the agenda. Of course, the question now is, "Why give the public the appearance you want to be transparent?" After holding a discussion of a public school program funded with federal tax dollars in an executive session, that sounds so funny. It's shameful that the CEO and the board chair would abuse their power and force the discussion that should have been in the full public view behind closed doors, simply because you wanted to ensure that any board member with integrity could not disclose that the Head Start program was taken over by the feds. You intentionally set to defraud the public by announcing the board had voted to relinquish the Head Start funds, as opposed to honestly saying that the only way PGCPs could retain a Head Start program was to relinquish its control over the program. There's a big difference in those words. The board chair moved to deceive the public into thinking PGCPs had a choice in this matter when it was a mandate that, in authority, it was mandated that you relinquish the authority. Shame on you. This is another demonstration of the board chair and the CEO have no remorse for hiding the fact that children were being abused, and they will continue the pattern of deception for political gain. It is not about children. It's about serving the County Executive that promised to protect them from termination, force resignation, and prosecution, regardless how many children were abused, molested, or subjected to dangers while in a Prince George's County school. Again, I call the State's Attorney's Office, the Chief of Police, and the Department of Justice, do your job in protecting children. I saw a parent arrested for leaving a child in a car, and you called that endangerment. Yet the CEO, the board chair, and the vice chair concealed child abuse of kids under the age of five and some with special needs. And then you want to say that you're going to have a family institute inaugural on Saturday? That's a joke. How could such heinous acts go unpunished that are against children? And then you fire bus drivers today for dropping off kids at the wrong stop, saying that that was endangerment, and you sit here in your chairs? I ask any person that plans to attend Saturday event, especially these guest speakers, if you love children, if you believe that breaking the law is a crime, you should not appear. Our leaders broke the law when they failed to report that children were being abused. They concealed it for political reasons, not for the love of children. So if you believe that Prince George's County School children lives matter, don't show up on Saturday.
Thank you, Ms. Wingfield. We will now move on to speakers for non-agenda items. Our first speaker this evening is Jillian Flowers.
There's very little service here. My name is Jillian Flowers. My son, Anthony Flowers Jr., is a kindergarten student at Calverton Elementary School. Earlier this year, my company, 2U, which is an education technology company, hoping to improve access to quality higher education, decided to permanently station their headquarters in Prince George's County, projecting to offer 900 jobs within the next five years. As such, my husband was raised and educated in Hyattsville his entire life. We both went to University of Maryland and decided Prince George's County would be an excellent place for us to plant our roots and raise our families. We knew that Prince George's County would provide educational opportunities for our children that would inspire the same passion for education in them that we have in ourselves. So to start, I would like to give special thanks to Ms. Rutherford at Calverton Elementary for giving my five-year-old an excellent start to his kindergarten education. He comes home every day telling me he had a great day and excited to tell me all that he has learned. It is with a heavy heart that I will have to tell him that he can no longer attend school, as we do not have a way to get him to and from school each day. Prince George's County Public Schools have provided a glimpse of a quality education on one hand and taken it away with the other. The Transportation Office has denied my son a bus to school, which I believe is in violation of Administrative Procedure 3541, which establishes the walk zone for elementary students as 1.5 miles to the school. The policy also states, however, that when walking conditions are unsafe, a bus will be provided for those students. The Transportation Office has not appropriately enforced the second part of this procedure in denying my son a bus to school. Transportation Supervisor Tony Sprul, as well as others in the department, have come to our neighborhood and determined that it is safe for a five-year-old to walk to school despite the following conditions. He has acknowledged that two out of the three streets that he would have to walk do not have sidewalks. There are cars parked on both sides of the street, forcing him to walk in the middle of the street. His explanation to this is that there aren't that many cars. Well, to that I say, he walks past at least 35 houses on his way, each with at least one car. I think that's plenty of cars to provide a danger to my son's safety. He also would have to cross an intersection that only has two stop signs, forcing him to cross a street that does not have either a crosswalk or a crossing guard. So if that is not an unsafe walking condition, I would love to know what is. The response from the office has been abysmal. It has taken months to receive a single response, and when we did receive a response, it was incomplete and misrepresented of our current situation. Ms. Carter Evans has gone so far as to tell me that other neighborhoods are even worse than mine, and they have to walk to school. And to that I say, putting even more lives in danger does not make me feel better about the safety of my son. Every single safe-walking resource posted by both the Maryland State Department of Education and Prince George's County Public Schools includes in their top tips that you should use sidewalks and crosswalks.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. Our next speaker is Kimberly Hall.
My name is Kimberly Hall. I'm from the Blainsburg Bus Lot, and I've been a Prince George's County school bus driver for 13 years. I'm here today to bring before you an issue that has been a constant source of confusion for our drivers, school staff, and our parents. The issue I bring before you is the rules for releasing PM pre-kindergarten and kindergarten students off of the school bus. Recently, transportation employees received a letter on this matter, and it stated that any violation of the rules regarding this issue will be a Category 3 offense, which could lead to termination of employment. The rule is that pre-kindergarten, kindergarten students must be released to an adult, an older sibling, or other designee. The issue is that these students are not readily identifiable by PGCPs drivers. Our drivers are not supplied with a student list that would tell us their name and drop-off location, nor a list of persons approved to receive the student. Furthermore, these students wear no distinguishing clothing or ID tags. It is also a common occurrence for school staff to place a child on the wrong bus. If the driver were provided a student list, and maybe if the school staff carry one with them, they could check and see if the child in fact belongs on that bus. You don't expect teachers to take role without a roster, but we are expected to transport students and guess their destination. After two weeks of school, there are drivers facing charges of child neglect because they unknowingly release pre-K or kindergarten child off their bus without supervision. This disorganization has to stop. The potential for drivers to lose their means of supporting their families is nothing to take lightly. We are not given the proper tools to do the job effectively. There needs to be a universal system for releasing pre-K and kindergarten students. Currently, there are too many staff members and sometimes safety patrols. Okay? Safety patrols, placing children on buses and no accountability among the staff as to who was placed on which bus. Drivers need to be provided student lists and lists of persons approved to receive these students, just as we do for the school office staff. Also, these students need to be required to wear a highly visible ID tag with their name, route number, and pickup and drop-off locations. These students should also wear a different uniform from the rest of the students. These simple improvements, and they are simple, will significantly improve driver recognition of pre-K and kindergarten students. The side of my bus reads Prince George's County Public Schools. Now, it's time that we started taking transportation issues and transportation employees more seriously.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hall. Our next speaker is Jocelyn Ford.
Good evening, school board members. I'm here to speak about the attic cost of your child attending a public charter school. This is what I have for my child's school. They will cost, you use a registration fee of $150 for transportation your child to school at a rate of $225 a month, with the small writing with an $8 processing fee, which equals up to $2,408 for a child who lives in the southern part of the county. My child attends CMIT North, okay? He's been there ever since it started, it opened up, from the seventh grade. I love the school. I love the charter school. I love what they're teaching my child at the school. But I do not understand why we have to pay so much for transportation. And these are, again, people who are coming up transporting our kids. It's not county employees. It's not a bus that says Prince George's County Public Schools. It's a bus from a private company that buy our users' buses from Prince George's County when they send them off to auctions. And my other question is, before this board, is I want to know, why is it that CMIT North, class of 2017, has to graduate from Laurel High School? They're the first charter school. They're going from kindergarten up to the 12th grade. They made it to 12th grade this year. Test scores are excellent from that school, and this school board knows it. Why do they have to graduate from Laurel High School, the first class of 2017? They have kids that going to college that will receive associate degree, just like the College of Health and Science. I just want to know. And if this board, I keep asking questions, and I can't get any answer. I guess it's time for me to take this to Annapolis. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Our next speaker is Teresa Mitchell Dudley, President of Prince George's County Education Association.
Good evening. I have bandages for anybody who needs one tonight. It's kind of a rough crowd in here. But that's, you know, this is a marathon, not a sprint for me, being a president of PGCEA. And tonight, I want to talk about the children, and I want to thank you for being attentive. As professional educators, we love our students and the parents we serve. Our children are suffering. Each time we hear cases of children being neglected or abused, we weep. Let me make it perfectly clear: PGCEA shares the administration's intentions to protect the children. The mandatory reporting of suspected child abuse is state law, and everyone should be held accountable because it is understandably the right thing to do. However, there are issues arising. Now, that couldn't have been three minutes. Are you cutting me out a little bit of time there? What's up with that? Come on now. I'm just playing. However, there are issues arising from some of the new reporting guidelines, and the children are suffering. Last spring, we had large numbers of staff on administrative leave. When an allegation is made, an educator is removed from their assignment and placed on administrative leave, which can last a minimum of four to six weeks. And some of them can last for up to, for months. The students of that educator may be taught by substitute teachers or dispersed among other classes. That equates to at least half of a market period of lost instruction. The children are suffering by not having a certified instructor teaching in their content area in front of them. It is also traumatic for the children and the parents when their teacher suddenly disappears. Who is responsible for grading assignments? Who's responsible for placing assignments into school mags? The children are suffering in other ways, because staff is afraid to get involved in situations that could be dangerous for children for fear of being placed on administrative leave. Our educators are standing with their hands behind their backs for, or for being, for being, for, excuse me, for fear of being placed on leave or terminated for any touching of a child. We are asking for common sense in handling cases. If a child is sliding down a banister, what should we do? Grab his arm and stop the impending fall? Or say, "Please stop," and then when they fall and bump their heads, get accused of neglect? We are in trouble if we do or if we do not intervene. If a child is running down the hall, am I to put my arm out to stop the runner or to just say, "Stop running"? I've seen a child's arm broken because another student was running and ran into her. If a fight breaks out between students, what should I do? Here are some solutions, because I won't come to you without solutions. One, number one, the process needs to be improved on the length of time it takes to bring a case to closure. The mandatory reporting has created such a culture and a system that our system was not ready to absorb. So we have a big backlog, and we need to address that. We have been able to address some of this with moving staff members around, but right now, we really need to get ahead of this, as opposed to be behind it if we know that we're going to have this situation. This situation is traumatic for educators and their families. I have spent many nights at 11, 12, 1 o'clock at night talking with teachers. What resources are available to assist teachers in waiting to return? Care also needs to be given on how staff is being re-entered back into their classes. If you've been out of school for, out of your class for six months, how do you go back? What happens to those teachers? What happens to the parents? Who's now responsible for the grades? Is it best for that teacher to go back? We really need to take a look at how this is impacting people. The fourth thing I'm asking for, and I'm almost done, is common sense. System-wide staff development, where we talk about what is appropriate, what is professional behavior when you're addressing children? Because if we don't do that, and we don't change the culture and how we're doing this, our children will continue to struggle. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you so much, Ms. Dudley. I will take those bandages, and I join you in this marathon. Our next speaker is Doris Reed, Executive Director of ASASP.
I'm here this evening speaking before you because I believe that, in spite of the unilateral actions of the CEO, this board still has the authority given to it by law and the voting citizens of Prince George's County to decide the operational policies of this school district. The recent treatment of personnel working on our Head Start program has been nothing less than tragic. It seems that low-level expendables were summarily dismissed while their executive staff supervisors were absolved and made immune from any shared blame. While the CEO speaks of only being concerned about the children, employees, families, and lives have been shattered. Be clear, this union, all of the unions, believe that the safety and welfare of the children should never be compromised. Those who offend must be dealt with. However, that penalty must include each responsible person, regardless of position and regardless of title. We must therefore ask, what about the children? Will this new company hire all certified teachers like the school district has for this many years? Will the school system recover costs by charging rent for our facilities? I find it interesting that there are documents which show one top-level administrator bragging about preventing the board vice chair from placing Head Start on the agenda, bragging that he, in conjunction with the board chair, only placed the incident in board docs, thus not providing an open discussion at any scheduled board meeting. He has not been terminated. There are those employees who were dismissed for what the CEO has called a failure to report. Yet there were executive staff, including the CEO, who were familiar with the recent system issues made public over these many months, who themselves failed to report those same reportable incidents. Incidents which prompted the CEO to fire employees and to announce those firings in a public demonstration. a public demonstration of his indignation. Instead, these top-level individuals placed the blame and the subsequent penalties on those who reported to them and suffer no penalties themselves. In order to cover up their mistakes and to justify their actions, the administration updated one specific administrative procedure just in August, dealing with reporting guidelines, allowing them to now apply the harsh penalties to our affected union members. This administration has developed a culture of fear within the school district, which causes employees to hunker down and to put on protective blinders, thus minimizing the possibility of placing themselves in harm's way. SEIU Local 400 President William Selman is not available tonight, but he wanted me to convey to you that his members share the same concerns as the other unions. He gave two examples of what this culture of fear has created. A custodian in a special education center for years took pictures of those students and put them on a board, which delighted the students. He no longer does this. Another custodian said he steps into a closet while classes change, both from fear of accidentally coming in contact with a student and being falsely accused and subjected to the risk of termination. A culture of fear is not supportive of the children. Respect the employees who support the children, and let's really be about the children.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Our next speaker is Shirley Kirkland, President of Local 2250.
Good evening, Board members. While I stand here before you, my statement is to the parents and the community members, which this board sits before as professional stakeholders in the education and the tutelage of our most precious assets, the children of Prince George's County Public Schools. Parents, don't be fooled. As the president of ACE-Asme Local 2250, I cannot in good conscience have you believe that the recent termination of employees will fix the problem as administration or this board would have you believe. Did you know 90% of the employees working in the school system are taxpayers, homeowners, and, and/or parents of children in the school system? We too are stakeholders in this county. We, like administration, are committed to growth and education of our children. When administration submit our employees as sacrificial lambs to, to the slaughter, it's a smokescreen covering up the real issue. The real issue is short staffing, archaic or non-existing policy and procedures, poor management practices, practices that result in poor fiscal results. Parents, some of the effects of our children will, will face using termination as a fix will be, buildings with maintenance issues will go unrepaired, no AC, no heat, toilet backups, limited bus runs resulting in late pickup or eliminated routes, sick children without caring professional or to, of caring professional to administer medication, special needs children not receiving special services, lunch lines backed up or not having enough food ordered, and the list goes on. I ask you, what about the children? Losing funding for Head Start wasn't the employees' fault. The fault lies with this board and administration's willful neglect of their fiduciary duty to comply with the federal government's request in a timely manner. Board of Education, it is your fiduciary duty to ensure administration carries out policy and procedure. If administration is not, I strongly suggest a fact-finding meeting, ending in termination just as administration is doing with its dedicated employees. Let's focus on the whole child. Together as partners, we must be successful in our mission, ensure that every child have a great learning environment. We are your union partners, not your enemies. Let's work on strengthening our partnership and truly be great by choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kirkland. Our next speaker is Alicia Ren.
My name is Alicia Ren. I'm here to speak to you tonight on several different issues that affect me personally and as a PGCPS employee, parent, and community member. I'm currently employed with PGCPS as a bus driver. Since the start of the school year, there have been several incidents involving pre-K kindergarten children getting off at the wrong stop. We recently received a memo updating the guidelines and procedures for dropping these students off with consequences not, excuse me, consequences for not following these guidelines being up to or including termination. As a general airbus driver, we average up to 50 to 60 children per school. In taking, in talking with a number of my coworkers, we feel that the safeguard should be in place to ensure that the incidents don't happen again. Personalized buses, identifiable colors, or aids on buses with students are just a few suggestions. We ask that you look into ways to put safeguards in place to ensure this doesn't happen again. As a parent, my concern lies with the registration and withdrawal process. I recently had to register my three rising ninth graders. High schools require me to withdraw them from their former, former boundary schools, which is Wise. I went to Wise doing normal registration, withdrawal hours, only to find that there was not a registrar on staff to, to, to withdraw them. There were several parents there that were angered, expressed concern about having to come back another day and only having one trained registrar at the school, at that size and magnitude. I ask that you look into ways to streamline this process so that there, at schools of that size have more than one registrar or more than one person that is trained to withdraw or register children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Sandra Wood.
Hello, my name is Sandra Wood, and I'm a bus driver at Fairmont Bus Line. When it, when I obtained my CDL, I would tell you, it was a proud moment, which meant, and I would do something that I love, which is drive, all right? So I'm transporting these kids, and I really do like driving. I'm not good at speaking, but I'm gonna say what I have here, okay, real quick. I do, like I said, I'm doing something that I love, drive. And now, a school bus, as a parent, a grandparent first, so I know the concerns just as much as the parents of the precious cargo that we transport. My other concerns are the labor relations within the union, the contract. As a driver, we have stopped getting our steps, anniversary increases, and as a member, a paying member, I would like to ask that you honor the contract as it should be. I would also like to say that it takes a village to raise a child, as teachers, cafeteria workers, aides, drivers. We should all be in solidarity to, when it comes to our precious children. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeremy Joseph.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Maxwell and fellow citizens. My name is Jeremy Joseph. I'm here behalf, on, on behalf of the Parent Leadership Institute for Prince George's County, Parent Leadership and Training Institute for Prince George's County. The Parent Leadership Training Institute enables parents to become leading advocates for children. Parents' opinions are often unheard, and they might lack advocacy skills, but not the motivation or will to change their children's lives. The PLTI teaches, teaches parents who wish to improve lifelong health, safety, and learning of children on how to be practiced change agents for the next generation. Although the parent leadership, although the PLTI curriculum is developed nationally, the application of this curriculum is differentiated to meet local needs. This is a 26, a 26-week program, which can serve as a complement to the Family Institute. Each class of parents mentors the next class, creating a pyramid effect of community caring and developing a condition, a coalition of parent leaders. The Parent Leadership Training Institute was designed by the Connecticut Commission on Children, the American Leadership Forum, and the leadership on, of Greater Hartford, and has been successfully training parents for more than 10 years. The program has been implemented in over 10 cities, including our neighbor to the south, which is Alexandria, Virginia. Now, research suggests that there is a positive link between student achievement and parent advocacy. Speaking up for children protects and promotes their success. Children whose parents are advocates are more likely to be confident in school, to take on more, and to achieve more. The more families advocate for children, their support for children in their progress, their children stay in school longer and they do better in school. So we certainly respect and applaud the work that Dr. Maxwell, along with the board, have displayed in organizing the inaugural PGCPS Family Institute Conference. The PLTI, Prince George's County, would like to meet with the board in order to discuss how we can partner with PGCPS Family Institute to, to help our students enter college and become career-ready. Thank you.
That concludes our public speaking, our registered speakers for the evening. As always, we thank you for your feedback. This is a forum, I will only say, I will take my point of personal position as a forum where the board cannot directly respond. I look forward to the continuing ongoing dialogue and to a chance to talk about our and my commitment, dedication, and years of work, my love for this county and for this work, and the continuing work that I plan to do to help improve the county and the school district that I love, and I look forward to an ongoing dialogue. And with that, I will move on to the next agenda item, which is our, our discussion item, 4.1, on Head Start Update. Also on that item is 11.2, the Head Start Policy Council Minutes and Follow-Up. I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of the discussion item.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks, members of the board. I'd like to take a few minutes to update the board on a few matters related to our Head Start program. On Monday, August 29, the Head Start program opened for the 2016-17 school year with, by most accounts, very few problems. I, along with the county executive, visited Glass Manor Elementary School, and members of my executive team visited every Head Start classroom across the district and continue to do so, although not in every single day. Prior to the beginning of the school year, all Head Start staff received training on suspected child abuse and neglect, and additional training for positive behavior techniques, which is a requirement of Head Start. These trainings will continue throughout the year. Additionally, all matters related to child safety in our Head Start program are now being reported directly to my deputy superintendents for appropriate follow-through reporting and accountability. Lastly, we have conducted several unannounced observations throughout the district's Head Start program to ensure adherence of school system policy and procedures, and will continue them throughout the school year. Additionally, the administration, along with four members of the Board of Education and our partners in county government, met with representatives from the Administration for Children and Families and their interim grantee to discuss next steps related to the program's transition. Discussions are still underway with both organizations, and we will provide further updates as they become available. Additionally, we have created a special section on our PGCPS website with the latest program information for our parents. Over the next few weeks, we will communicate with our parents' Head Start staff on all updates, and will make that information available for the public as well. As I've stated before publicly, and I will do so again now, our priority is to ensure that all current students enrolled in our Head Start program remain with no, remain in school with no disruption and receive quality instruction. Dr. Eubanks, this concludes my update.
Colleagues, I'll open the floor for discussion and questions. You're not, keep the, Mr. Blocker, you didn't buzz, you didn't, I don't know what you're doing, but I see, no, but it's fine, I saw you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just have a couple of questions. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if someone, whether it's the chair, vice-chair, you, Dr. Maxwell, if you can explain specifically what the next steps are. You know, before we move forward with, you know, continuing on with the next steps for the Head Start program, I still want some clarity as far as this, this investigation, if there's going to be investigation, dealing with the administration and the Head Start situation in our county.
So I'm not exactly sure I understand everything that you're asking, but I would say that we have been doing some fact-finding and interviewing people, and we've been doing, following our, following discipline, discipline process for folks that are identified as being a part of the concerns that the Administration for Children and Family followed, and we're working through that process, doing the additional training that I just mentioned in my report, and continuing our conversations with the Administration for Children and Family.
Okay, so my question is, the investigation, are we going to have some type of internal investigation? I mean, what's going to go on so that we're doing a complete review of our administration and what happened with the Head Start program?
So we've begun that, we have begun that, and that's what part of the interviewing of employees is, and where we believe people have not done what they were supposed to do. We have been taking action against those employees. That's our responsibility when things are brought to our attention. And we will, we will continue to update as additional information becomes known to us, who, you know, who did what, who did it, when they did it, and again, follow through on our proper processes and procedures.
And what are we doing to inform the public as we go step by step with this internal investigation? And then my second question is, no, no, go ahead, you can answer the first one.
So there are pieces of personnel investigations that are able to be public, that we've taken action, but there are other pieces that are not able to be made public. The fact that we have taken action is, you know, we made that statement last week that we have done that, but there are, again, things that you do not and cannot legally discuss in public about individual employees. But we are following the process that is well entrenched in Prince George's County to make sure that we follow the process that we afford our employees when they are accused of wrongdoing, and then taking action that we feel is appropriate upon completion of those interviews. And there's a process by which they may also be appealed to the Board of Education, and there's appeals, you know, come before you. You have probably seen some appeals scheduled since your arrival on the board.
So what leaders are going to be held accountable for what's going on?
The ones that need to be held accountable.
Okay, so again, when are you going to inform the public of this situation? I mean, again, we have parents, we have students who are impacted by this. I represent those 932 students that were impacted by us losing the grant for Head Start. So what I will say is, I am very disappointed in the way that the Head Start program situation is being handled by administration, and I think that we need to be as transparent as possible for our parents and community.
So I'm glad that you're disappointed, Mr. Blocker, but you should wait until you have all the facts to be dis, to be disappointed.
I have the facts, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burrows.
I guess my, my first question is around student safety. Dr. Maxwell, I've been getting a lot of questions from parents and the public about my thoughts on if our students are safe or not. So my first question to you is, what can you tell the board, what can you tell parents to assure us that our students are safe? And the concern comes out of, of this. In the February 29 report, the federal government sent a letter which essentially said that there are multiple cases of abuse that have not been reported. The federal government only observed the Head Start case, the Head Start program, but the Head Start programs are in schools. And so I have a concern that there could be other cases of abuse that are not in the Head Start program but are in other schools throughout the system. And so my first question to you is, what are we doing differently to ensure that our students are safe?
So, Mr. Burrows, I think you're well aware, and I believe that we've been very clear publicly as well. When the first heinous case was reported a year ago, almost, not a year ago, six months ago, I guess in February, when we engaged with our partners, set up a Student Safety Task Force, that Student Safety Task Force put in hundreds of hours of time to review our policies, our procedures, they made recommendations, they made suggestions, gave us considerations. This board acted and changed policy. Procedures accompanying those policies have all been updated. The recommendations of the task force are in the process of being implemented. The Office for Accountability and Monitoring and Compliance, I believe is the name of the office, in some order of those three words, has been set up. The person that's leading that office started just a few weeks ago and is well-engaged in that process of monitoring. The training took place last spring of all employees, almost immediately after the first case, there was another set of training, and we've been evaluating further changes to training and have made some changes in the interim and retrained employees again at the beginning of this school year.
Did the Student Safety Task Force have knowledge of abuse cases related to Head Start?
The trigger for that investigation was not the Head Start case, and when that work began, this was not in our, I guess it was not, we were not aware of this when we set up that Student Safety Task Force in February.
Okay. And I would just say, I don't think the issue that we have here is policy. It's unacceptable, I think, under all policies, to abuse a kid. And so, we don't have a policy issue, we have a culture issue, but that's a little separate.
You asked about policy and procedures and what kind of training we've done differently, and we've been working with our employees to make sure that they understand that. And as it relates to Head Start, I just said that we did training on positive behavior.
Thank you. Actually, what I asked was, what can we tell the public to ensure that our students are safe? And I'm telling you that telling parents that we've changed our policies is not sufficient because, under all policies, past and present, it is not acceptable to have these cases of abuse. So, telling the public that we've changed our policies is not reassuring, is what I'm telling you. Also, I have a question. The initial notice, I believe, was sent to the administration in February. What actions were taken once that letter was received in February to, whether it was staff, or what happened once you received that February letter that said we had employees not complying with the federal investigation, said that we had multiple incidences of abuse that had not been reported? When you first received that February letter, what happened between then and the time that the grant was terminated to correct these issues? What corrective measures that we put in place around this when we were notified?
So, Mr. Burrows, as Dr. Eubanks stated at the beginning, and as we have said, we continue to investigate this matter, we continue to interview folks, we've been developing a timeline, we've shared part of where we are with that, with the board, and that will be part of when we're finished with all of the conversations that we need to have, that will be part of that full briefing.
Okay. I'll just save the rest for the next round, but, you know, I just have some concern, if we received, I'm not sure if you answered my question, my question was, if we received a notice in February, what happened, March, April, May, in the in-between time to ensure that we were holding those individuals accountable that did not comply with the federal investigation? And what were we doing to ensure that students did not continue to be abused or neglected? Because there are other cases that have come out recently that have not been reported to the federal government that happened after we received that letter. And so, I want to know specifically, what did we do as a system to ensure that we were protecting our students, and who do we hold accountable right then and there?
And so, that's part of the investigation, of who needs to be held accountable, Mr. Burrows. We've been developing that timeline, we have been interviewing employees, we have been trying to make sure that we are aware of all of the facts, and when we are finished with that, we will brief the board. I believe we're saying the same thing over and over again.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First and foremost, I want to thank Dr. Davis for, you know, setting up a meeting that I had with the principal at Samuel P. Massey Academy earlier this week. It's one of the three federally-funded Head Start programs in District 7. I stopped by that classroom first on my tour, made sure that was first, really checking on those 20 or 19 students. All seemed well, all was going well, and I'm glad that the classrooms that are not only in Sam P. Massey, but also in Overlook and William Bean, as well as the county-funded Head Start programs all throughout my district are operating smoothly as possible during this ordeal, honestly. And I wanted to open up to my colleagues, I know I said this in executive session, but I'm going to say it publicly, so that those in the audience, those watching online, and those who may watch the news coverage, as one of the members that was selected by the board to be on that transitional committee, if any individual wants to converse with me or look at my notes, you are more than willing to contact me via my email. I will share what I want to share. I do not want to go further in perpetuating a stigma of this board that we are covering up something. This board member will be open and transparent to any and everybody in Prince George's County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. So, I've been contacted by a couple of, two groups of parents who moved here from other areas in the region, and their email to me was very specific in that they just want to know what's going on in the school system because they just moved here. And they asked me would I have a transparent conversation with them. And of course, I told them, yes, I would. My questions really get to the safety of our children and, at the same time, the protection of our staff. So, my question goes to, what exactly is the training? So, is the training, this is what I've heard, is that the training is a video that's set up, and then staff have to sign saying that they received the training? I don't know if there's one-on-one training with staff to actually get, because, you know, they may have questions based on that video, if that's true, I'm not sure if it is, so if you could address that. And then the other thing that I really have concern about, so we've created yet another division, department, monitoring compliance, and I know it came out of the task force report, but the reality is, we have enough staff at very high levels in the school district that should be well-qualified, and I mean, if I just go down the list, I mean, you have the principal, you have the assistant principal, you have the area director, you have the instructional director, you have the associate superintendent, you have the deputy superintendent, and you have the CEO. That's a lot of levels. We shouldn't have to have a new department to do monitoring and compliance for the safety of our kids. And so, I'm saying that because, quite frankly, I haven't had the conversation with these families, I told them I would follow back up with them, but at the end of the day, I also had a parent call me and say that she found out that one of the staff that supposedly was involved with this was transferred to her child's school. What do I tell that parent? I mean, I think at the end of the day, we do have a duty, we do have a responsibility, and, you know, we can do the pomp and circumstance in front of the, you know, we want to be, you know, make sure we're not being seen as a certain way. But you know what, as a person who's been here for a long time, I have learned so much, and I have learned a lot in terms of how we can do our jobs better. And we just need to acknowledge when we need to do it better and acknowledge when we are wrong and just say, we messed up. Because right now, I think what we constantly are hearing is that no matter what is coming out of our mouths, the trust is not going to be earned because we're saying things. And so, at the end of the day, I really do believe that to earn the trust of our public, and me as a parent, because I have a child in the school system, going forward, I think it does require someone on the outside to do a different kind of investigation and say, this is what we saw, and working together with the school district, these are our recommendations, not creating new offices, the staff that you have, this is how the training is going to happen, and it'll be training that's meaningful, so that staff do know when they are in violation or not in violation. I get, I mean, I have teachers telling me they don't hug children, they don't want to touch children, and so it runs the gamut. I'm just saying that at the end of the day, we just need to say we're wrong, we made a mistake, and then get it right. And not just that, involve the public in this process. And sometimes involving the public means we have to come and say, what do you think? How do you think we can make this better? So that they feel like they're involved and that they actually are.
Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and my colleague, Ms. Jacob. I'm confident saying we were wrong, we made a mistake. It's clear. So, the question is, what's next? Those of you who know me know that I've been advocating for two things with all the time that I have, which is making sure that we have engaged parents, like myself, a parent of two children, in this school system, who are here to advocate for their children, and so I'm glad to see people like Jeremy out here tonight talking about this. I'm also a tireless advocate for the retention and recruitment of educators, particularly male educators, because as a former male educator at Oxon Hill Middle School, I understand the pressures it takes to educate 90, 100, 120 kids every day who come to school hungry, who come to school without structure, and come to school to be loved, to be told you are somebody, and to be told you can do anything in spite of what you've been told at home. I had been told during a lunch break, "Mr. Valentine, you cannot be in the classroom with that female student tutoring her." I said, "Okay, I didn't know that," but a teacher told me, "For your own safety, make sure someone else is in the room with you, or at least keep your door open." I thanked her for that, and then I moved on. So, I understand, I've been on both sides of this argument, and I understand, as Mr. Burrows has said, there is a need for a cultural shift. We cannot have teachers come and be effective and make sure that we are competitive and they're preparing students to go off to college and to demonstrate what we saw earlier with this young lady going off to college with 60 credits? That's money in your pocket. That's almost $60,000 she saved. But we can't come and prepare our student if you're afraid to, as Ms. Jacob said, hug a child. And so, there has to be a cultural shift, and I think that acknowledging that that has to take place is the first step. And so, what I believe, you know, my question is, and this gets to what PGCEA President Teresa Dudley brought up, which is making sure that we don't create a culture where teachers are ineffective in what they're asked to do on a daily basis, which, in a perfect situation, is very demanding. This work is the hardest work on the planet, and if you have never been a teacher, I will give you all the money in my pocket to stand in front of 30 kids who are learning on 30 different grade levels how to teach them how to do something they've never seen before. I'll give it to you right now. And so, my question is actually to Board Counsel Shawna Battle, because we've had this conversation, particularly on how we report and investigate teachers who have either been, have suspected of an incident, or you've witnessed an incident, and so I wanted you to particularly just walk us through sort of the process of reporting. And so, as a, if I'm a teacher at Oxon Hill Middle School, and I observe a colleague doing something I may believe is inappropriate, and again, this is a very subjective observation of someone who may have been seeing something at one angle versus someone else saw another angle, what the process is. What role does our system have in relationship to the Department of Social Services, which is outside of the school system? And then lastly, I think also to PGCEA President's point is, what recommendations you have to the Board of Education and to the County Council about how we can more effectively resource our system to ensure that we have proper timing of investigation so that we get our teachers back into the classroom? As a parent, again, I dread the phone call or the message that my child's going to have a long-term substitute. That's something that no parent wants to hear. And so, the longer that happens, the impact on children like my daughter and my son and other parents in the system is detrimental. And so, can we walk us through particularly what that process is, and you've not had that conversation offline, but I think is important to have in public, but also any recommendations you may have to the school board and to the county council and county executive on how to resource the school system and the Department of Social Services around making sure that this process is expedited? Thank you.
Okay, there you go. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. When the incident took place in February, late January, we immediately began retraining all staff across the district. After the Student Safety Task Force report came out, and they recommended that we retool our training module, our student services staff worked on it all summer long, and they worked on it in conjunction with our Office of Child Protective Services. And they developed a webinar, it's about 45 minutes long, and there's a video component, and then they go over what the law says. And I think that's an important piece that we need to emphasize, is that state law mandates that each of us has a duty and a responsibility to report suspected child abuse. And so, that applies to all of us regardless of what our job is, whether we're a bus driver, a cafeteria worker, a teacher, or someone who works in central office. And we retooled our administrative procedure to clarify some of the questions that have come up over the past six months. One of the things that we clarified is that the report should be made immediately. So, if someone sees something or hears about something, they are supposed to call CPS immediately. We clarified that no one has to seek permission from a supervisor to report to CPS. Everybody is supposed to make the phone call immediately and report to CPS, and they have 48 hours to submit the documentation. What I can say to you is, is that when we retrained staff in the spring and we asked them to report things that they had seen and that they have been seeing, people responded. And I believe that our Office of Child Protective Services, they were overwhelmed by the number of phone calls that they received, and I know that Dr. Maxwell had conversations with our county partners about how we could support that Office of Child Protective Services. But I can tell you that our own Office of Security Services, I think their cases that they investigated this past school year tripled. So, if during the previous school year, they averaged about 150 cases, I think they investigated about 400 cases during the previous school year. So, I acknowledge the fact that, yes, there were people who may have been out longer than we would have liked, but I do believe that some of that had to do with the fact that each case had to be investigated. I've had teachers and administrators say to me, why do you have to place us on administrative leave when a report comes in? And we, our process is that when a report comes in of suspected abuse, we place that employee on administrative leave pending the outcome of an investigation, they're placed on administrative leave with pay. But the reality of it is, is that the reason we place them out is because the allegations could be true, and so we have to remove them from the building until we know. And depending on the type of case, many times we wait to see whether CPS indicates or not. Sometimes even if CPS doesn't indicate, we may say that that behavior was unprofessional, and maybe the person may not be terminated, but they may need a letter of counsel or some retraining.
And so, I guess, just for clarification, can you clarify what CPS means for folks who are...
Child Protective Services.
And where does that office sit?
It's a state agency.
Okay. So, that's independent of the school system?
Yes. Yes.
And so if it's initiated through CPS, it has to go forward, no matter even if it's, even if the claim has, you know, is unfounded, they have to investigate to ensure that it's unfounded?
That's correct. So sometimes you can make the phone call, and, and Child Protective Services will, what they call, screen it out. Like maybe you may call saying, "We think this child is neglected," and they, the circumstances don't warrant or meet the level of criteria that they have for neglect. They have a very strict definition that they, that they follow that's provided in state law with what they're looking for in terms of abuse. So, you know, they, they're looking for bruises when you say that a child has been, you know, physically abused. And then with regard to sexual abuse, they have experts who are trained to interview children so that they don't cause further harm or further damage.
And, and last question, I was in conversation with a councilperson early today, and my understanding is that the last year's budget, they did increase this Office of Social Services budget to ensure that the time, response time in investigations like this were shortened. Do you believe additional resources would also cut back on the time we have teachers outside of the classroom during investigations? Or are the other recommendations you may have to ensure we have teachers outside of the classroom at the, the minimum amount of time possible?
I think certainly additional resources, but also I think we've worked really, really hard to increase our communication with the Child Protective Services. So we have folks in our Labor Relations Office who have regular conversations and meetings with our folks at CPS so that they can go over the cases that we have. And they could say to us, "Okay, I haven't gotten to that one yet, but I know it's gonna be screened out." And that gives us a way to move people up further so that we can, you know, bring them in for their due process hearings and get them back into schools as quickly as possible.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. And I'll just say, in conclusion, I echo my board colleague, Mr. Wallace's remarks about me wanting to be very open and honest about this process, but more importantly, about solutions. Feel free to contact me as you contact him. My phone number is public. Please don't call me during bath time. Other than that, I'm available to have conversations about how we improve our system to make sure that all of our teachers and parents are confident in our system every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Epps.
So hopefully I get that much time. Tiffany, I get, that's my time, right? Okay. Couple of questions about the incidences and the training. And I know you can't answer this specifically, but the employees who were then cited in June, is there any indication that those employees actually attended the training that you, that was held in the spring? Because, and it, and again, it goes to the effectiveness of the training?
Are you talking about the people who were recently terminated as a result of the Head Start incident? When you say terminated in June?
No, no. I, I said, there were incidents, so in Dr. Maxwell's response to Mr. Burrows, he mentioned that training took place in the spring after the February twenty-ninth letter, right? And then there were incidences that were reported in June.
May, may I clarify one thing before you respond? So the retraining everybody was not relative to the Head Start letter-
Okay.
-that was dated February twenty-nine, that was based on something that happened in December. The people who became aware of it didn't report, were discouraged people from reporting, right? It was based on the other case at Judge Silvania Woods, which prompted us to retrain all of our employees about who to report to, how to report. The reporting issue was the training that we're talking about. Head Start employees are trained in, in positive behavior intervention or instruction when kids do something wrong. Head Start believes that the way that the children were disciplined by the teachers and the teacher and the aide in June, and the other employees that are, are in there, were contrary to their, what they were supposed to do in dealing with children, not with a failure to report. Those instances were reported properly to the Administration for Children and Families, to Head Start.
Okay. So, but at the same token, we're also talking about being in a situation where the system was already under investigation, I'm talking Head Start now, and in the process of, of making a case to, to the children and families, the administrator, administration of children and families, then another incident happens. So now we're talking about another issue, which is not about reporting, but it's about behavior, like interaction with the children and treating the children a certain way. So what kind of training has been done in that regard to how teachers, aides, you know, people in the building or whatever, treat children?
So I think Dr. Davis is gonna add to this answer, but as I said a moment ago, and as I said in my opening remarks on this, the children, the, the employees of Head Start are trained in how to discipline children in a positive way.
Okay.
Right? They get that training as a part of the process of Head Start work.
So has that training, so has that training been retooled?
I don't believe that training has been retooled. I think it's been redone. I don't think it was changed. I think it was redone. And the employees in Head Start were all trained in the week prior to Head Start children this year coming back to school. Last year, it is my understanding, but again, I'm not the expert on Head Start, but that he, that the employees were heads, were trained last year according to the way they should have been trained. And these employees did not discipline in the way that they were supposed to discipline.
Okay. So then my next question-
Ms. Board Member Epps, I'm sorry, do you, is it okay if I just add on?
Sure.
Or would you like, otherwise, I'm sorry, you can ask your next question. Thank you. And I think one of the most important things for us to recognize is that, one, we definitely recognize that this has been a significant burden, not just on our parents and our staff, but also our Board of Education. And what I mean by that is this, this issue that we're all dealing with. It has been a significant burden on all of us. So we don't take that lightly-
Not at all.
-at all. And I think what's important for all of us to parcel out is that the first case at Judge Silvania Woods alerted this system about our requirement for reporting. That's what that piece was missing, is that something was going on in our school system that was not reported. So as Dr. Maxwell shared, the retraining, and what Shawna, Ms. Battle, also shared, that training was just on that we have to report if we suspect.
I'm clear about that.
Now what we are facing is that we do report, but what our challenge is, and it's complicated because it's behavior, is now how do we prevent the behavior from even occurring so we do not have to report a situation?
And that is the nature of my question, ma'am.
Thank you. That's the harder part, because that's about adult behavior. That comes with the culture concern that I believe Mr. Burrows has mentioned and a few other board members. So to answer your question about what we're doing about trying to change behaviors and change the culture in our district, Dr. Maxwell really brought that work in three years ago. And we've been working with the Arbinger Institute for the past three years about the culture in our school system. What was interesting was that the culture was really adult-to-adult culture, and how we need to treat one another, adult-to-adult. What we're finding now is that we also need to make sure that we are addressing adult-to-child culture as well. But to change adult behavior takes time. It doesn't mean that we're not addressing it, but it does take a little bit of time. But in the meantime, what we're trying to do is make sure that we do have different procedures in place, because this situ, these situations, as heinous as they are, are going to improve what we do in a school, in the school system.
Okay. If, if I may-
Sure.
So to your point about changing procedure, one of the things that's also seemed to have happened, and I can't speak specific to a, a particular policy, but one of the things that I've noticed is, four years ago, the policies and the administrative procedures were more aligned. And I've seen a misalignment in policy, and I'm, I'm speaking of when I get an email from a parent about a particular situation. And then I, one of the things that I do in my response is provide that parent with the link to the particular policy that addresses whatever situation. However, I have to say that in, in the last two years or so, I've stopped doing that because as I pull up policy and administrative procedure, I'm starting to see some misalignment there. So in addition to making sure that those procedures are in place, it may be helpful to work with the board and with the, particularly the Policy Committee, to make sure that the board policy or that the administrative procedures are in line, not only with the board policy as, as written, but also the, the intent. Because I can assure you, and, and I'm saying this, but you already know this, because I'm sure that you, there's no doubt in my mind that you feel the same way, that the intent of this board is for every student to have no less than the best experience they possibly can. I remember very clearly when I was three years old, I had a blast in school. So all of these allegations and situations and incidences and things like that that keep happening. And when I get a, a copy of the determination letter when a parent submits, what is it, forty, forty-one seventy, which is, you know, about harassment, now we're not talking about physical, we're talking about verbal. So even in terms of, let's say, our older students who are being verbally abused by staff, to the point where a parent has to submit a form, and then to have that form read, "Therefore such," and I quote, "Therefore such behavior," in parentheses, "though inappropriate and unprofessional, does not rise to the level of constituting discrimination and/or harassment. That being said, PGCPs does not countenance and use such behavior as PG, as is PGCPs's goal to promote student achievement consisting with standards and excellence framework. Accordingly, the undersigned recommends that the school administration provide council training, and if appropriate, discipline respecting appropriate communication with students, staff, and community members." I stopped at, "though inappropriate and unprofessional." So we're acknowledging the behavior and saying to parents, "Oh, oh, well." And, and so that's the kind of thing that I think, you know, the, the, those community members who are sitting in the audience in, in this entire county among, you know, upon reading article after article after article are disgusted about, are you serious? No. That, those are the kinds of things that I think we need to do. We need to align our policies and the procedures so that, and make sure that training is aligned with policy and procedure so that we don't have to worry about adult behavior. And that, that there's more in place to deal with. And certainly, you know, these kinds of responses to parents with concerns about, you know, verbal abusive language and other, even to the point where other parents have expressed the same thing about the same person. So to the fact that there's nothing in place to deal with that, or, you know, is, is a problem.
Thank you.
And this, and this document has been shared with the CEO, 'cause I sent it myself.
Thank you. And I do believe that you will see that there is a collective commitment to get better. I appreciate your suggestion of taking a look at the administrative procedures as well as the policy to look at the alignment. But I do want to make sure that we, because sometimes we use the same terms in general forms, when we're talking about procedures, sometimes we may not be talking about an official administrative procedure. So for instance, there could be a procedure that we've just recently changed, which is not an administrative procedure, about how cases get reported up in, in the, in the system. So not all procedures are officially documented in an administrative procedure when we're talking about some of the changes in the way that we do business in Prince George's County.
Then with all due respect, I submit that perhaps they should be. Because when it's an administrative procedure, it's trackable. And, and one thing that this system needs, the system is way too big not to track everything that goes on in the system.
Thank you for your suggestion.
Thank you. All right, colleagues, just keep us posted. I have myself, Williams, and Boston on round one, Jacobs, Wallace, and Burrows on round two. A comment and then a question on, on two things. I think as this, it's, it becomes abundantly clear, and it's no secret that when a failure of this magnitude happens, that it doesn't happen at a single level. It doesn't happen at a classroom level. Failure to this magnitude happens, is going to, would identify failures and mistakes at every level of, of this organization, from the classroom right up to a whole bunch of people sitting on this dais. There's no question about that, present company included. And, and a review of this process is gonna find those mistakes. And if we find, if an, an internal review doesn't find out where the mistakes were made and why, then an external review is just fine. Whatever it takes for us to find, to find out what, what mistakes were made and why, you know, that's important for us to go through. But the other thing, the, the, the more significant piece in the long run, and a number of us have said it, and I couldn't agree, the Washington Post talked about the, how we change the culture. We've talked about making cultural shifts in this organization. And culture, I'm not the culture of this organization. Dr. Maxwell isn't the culture of this organization. Eighteen thousand professionals and a hundred and twenty-nine thousand students and their families make up the culture of this organization. How we make that cultural change is significant. And there's a couple of pieces that I think are important to add to that question. The first is, is the things that we are doing now relative with our employees and with our, and with our collective bargaining partners may be necessary to avert the crisis. But we need a whole different relationship with our colleagues in, in collective bargaining and in our, and in our unions to really talk about what cultural change means in, within this organization. How do we begin to have a whole other level of conversation than what we're having today around, around how we learn how to love and treat each other differently across two-hundred-and-four buildings? And so I really want you guys to kind of talk to me both about, because I know we've had a bunch of these discussions and we're all the same, on, on the same boat with that, both about the plans for how we address culture, and in particular, how we're gonna engage our union partners in the process.
Thank you. And Doug, Dr. Anthony, if you don't mind also chiming in on part of the culture question, I would appreciate it. And I, I appreciate definitely, Dr. Sagoon, the idea of involving also our union partners. Because right now, the work that we're doing within culture has just been really at the central office level, at the school level, but it's been within the employees of Prince George's County. And I think that it's time to extend that culture conversation, not only with our Board of Education, as well as our union members, but also our county partners. So I definitely appreciate that.
First of all, good evening, board members. I think part of the conversation that we continue to have, and Dr. Davis mentioned, our work with the Arbinger Institute. And over the last three years, we've actually used a book entitled Leadership and Self-Deception, which gets people to unpack how they're helpful to an organization, how they're hindrance to an organization, and how they can help things go right. And so in our work, we're trying to get employees to understand that dynamic in the context of their work. And to the larger question I think Ms. Epps that you raised around, some of the conversation is about, as adults, how do we model for our students, how we interact and engage can have an impact obviously on how- and engage can have an impact, obviously, on how we work with our students. And so, the next phase of our work is actually working with the Arbinger Institute to develop a teacher, Arbinger standpoint and module. We currently have three modules that we're using that we trained over fifteen hundred employees in our school district on, that helps us really examine it, our practice around culture. Culture is a very complex thing. It takes an understanding of childhood lesson, growth, and development, if you're a teacher and educator, as well as any employee that works with children. And then it takes a perspective about where you are and how you see other people. We either see them as objects, or we see them as peoples, how we kind of boil down our conversations we've been having. And it's been very powerful. So, if you go into any school, you should find an educator or a support employee. Our trainers in the district are a cross-section of employees. So, we have fifty-one facilitators in the system that have all different walks of life in context of who's actually providing the training. So, it's a cross-representative of assistants, support personnel, principals, executive leaders, and so on. So, we'll continue to do the training. At the next principal's meeting, we're going to continue to dig deeper into culture, and depending on what level of supporting training they've had already, they'll go into a differentiated experience on September nineteenth, and we continue to do that in all our experiences.
And I think what's exciting, as Dr. Anthony mentioned, is that just even in the first week of school, nine schools asked for training. So, two hundred and ninety-three school-level employees, just in the first week of August, when employees reported back, are also getting this training.
Wonderful. And so, but during this, are our union partners kind of at the table, organizing this with us, establishing this, working on some of the stuff with us? I think you've kind of addressed that a little bit, but I would love to...
So, in terms of how this was indoctrinated in the system and brought to the forefront, was a conversation actually giving Dr. Davis credit for exposing us to it and then trying to really run with this as part of a focus on, you know, healing us as a community, quite honestly. When we've had transition in the district, there's been, you know, different ways people approach it and feel about it. And so, I really personally felt compelled, both as a parent and as an employee of the system, to try to engage in a different way. And Dr. Maxwell and Dr. Davis were gracious in supporting me to execute that. But to your question about our union partners, we think that's the next level of having a conversation, quite honestly. It's a level the board can have a conversation, and it doesn't have to be Doug Anthony facilitating the training. We have Arbinger partners who could come and share that work. They've done some work with the executive cabinet as well. So, that would be the next level of talking about what, I don't want to create another task force, but having experts kind of sit at the table and talk about those issues. So, everything you're speaking to, I think, should be a next step.
Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Thank you. You know, I've been talking to a lot of parents also about this situation, and unfortunately, we find ourselves dealing with this hard situation after we were coming out of or dealing with another hard situation. I think it's important that we understand how we ended up here, but I think more importantly, we have two important points that we have to focus on equally, because we're dealing with serving, and we've made a commitment to serve nine hundred and thirty-two kids this year. And we've also committed ourselves to coming out of this situation stronger and better. And so, I think it's very important that we keep in the forefront our commitment to serving those nine hundred and thirty-two students this year. I think it's great that Dr. Maxwell mentioned that we're going to be having staff report directly to the deputy superintendent. And that leads me to my first question. Can you give a little bit of detail about what you meant about reporting directly to those people?
So, each situation, I mean, there's a process that's been going through in the district where it reports to immediate supervisors, and there's a process, and then it gets sent perhaps to ELRO or calls to Child Protective Services. But they didn't always come up to the, you know, to the deputy level of things. And so, that's what's happening now, is that when those calls are taking place, particularly related to Head Start, but with many other ones as well, Dr. Davis and Dr. Golson are receiving those reports on the same day that they occur.
I think that's great to have it come to the, rise to the level of attention that we, as a board, would begin to be notified as well. As we look at those two points that we are trying to focus on, one is serving our students for this year, and what we look like when we recommit or reapply for the, a new grant. I think it's important that we are able to follow you as a board and as the public, follow this process along. So, I would like to request that when you have a timeline for moving the process along for the commitment for this year, and looking at, you know, how we're going to evolve into a better, newer, greater Head Start program, if you could share with us the milestones and timelines that we're going to work towards, I would like to recommend, and maybe you already have some thoughts on that. How do you plan on giving us regular updates on the progress?
So, we gave an update today after the first conversation that we have. We have another conversation coming up, and we will do the same thing after that. To your point about the commitment to the children, that timeline is there. The only question is where ACF, where CDI, where we, where, who does what where. But those children, I've been saying this all along, these children will receive services for the rest of the school year, as they were promised, as they did on the first day of school when they came on the twenty-ninth. That piece is not negotiable for us in my conversations with board members. It's not negotiable for the board, and so, we will provide services to nine hundred and thirty-two children that arrived on the twenty-ninth of August until the last day of school. The details are all that needs to be worked out. So, in terms of that timeline, I mean, that commitment is there, and it will, it will happen. In terms of the other process, that's partly driven by ACF, the Head Start folks, not by us. When they put out the next grant application, you know, there's a process that goes through there, and so, that'll be a process that's driven partly by them and being responded to by us. But we are having a conversation, a very early conversation, because that's, the first steps of that are months away, whereas we have this other very immediate concern. And so, we're dealing with the immediate concern now and having some early conversations about what that might look like with partners.
So, are we saying that we're going to have a regular agenda item in the public session for a report, or are we looking at having this information in follow-up items on a regular basis? And when I mean regular, I mean like every meeting. I think this should be a part of the discussion, or information be provided.
So, the board has an agenda-setting committee, and we discuss with the board what needs, you know, the board agenda-setting committee about that. If there's nothing to report, I'm not sure that there's a reason to have it on there. If there are changes or things that are happening, I agree that it should happen again as we brought it forward this time. And so, I would just say we'll defer to the board's agenda-setting committee, and if that's what gets placed on the agenda, it's what gets placed on the agenda.
So, I would like to recommend to the vice chair that if there isn't change, that maybe in the follow-up items, we have that so that it can stay on the forefront. You know, we get caught up in a lot of things throughout the year, budgets, you know, legislative issues and things like that, where it may not be at the forefront, and if it goes too far, it may not be put back on. So, and so, when we look at what we are trying to uncover or trying to commit to and complete, maybe we just have a checklist. For example, if for the future application for the grant, we know that we need to apply for the grant, and maybe on that checklist is, you know, look for that grant application to be put out there. We don't know when that's going to happen, but if we know that that's one of the things that we need to do next, we can just do a checklist and say, done. Or at least we know to ask for it on a regular basis, well, have you heard anything? Or we could ask that question, have you heard anything about that, the grant application? But I think it's very important that hearing it from you and hearing it from us, that we're committed to serving these nine hundred and thirty-two students, and Head Start relieves some anxiety from the parents. And as we go through this review process as to what happened to get us here, it will help, you know, to hopefully relieve some of the other anxieties. It's unfortunate that we're here now, we have to deal with it, but committing ourselves to the future, and whatever we learn from this review, we implement ways to change the culture. Thank you.
I think I'm in the queue, so I'll take this opportunity to answer one of your questions about whether or not we will, the agenda-setting committee will actually keep Head Start on the agenda-setting, as long as we have Head Start. I think this year, we will have Head Start on the agenda-setting, if it's no more to brief us on what's going on, where we are at this point, or to give us support on what's going on in the policy council. And I think I've already talked to Christian about that.
Ms. Boston, just want to make sure that the board is aware, on September twenty-second, which is the next board meeting, is a work session. Head Start is on the agenda for that work session as well. So, just to make sure, that was a change from the original, which was going to be an update on the strategic plan. The agenda-setting committee decided that Head Start needed to be on that agenda to allow for further discussion and information related to Head Start.
So, yes, we're committed to keep it on as long as we need to have updates and to have this conversation to continue. I want to say, this whole ordeal, like a lot of my colleagues have expressed today, has been very hard because of the impact that it has on children and families. And I think no one has taken it as hard as I have taken it, because I've, Head Start is special to me, and those members on the policy council that I've sat with in those meetings and asked questions in those meetings can attest to, that, you know, I have a passion for it, I love the program. I had a grandchild that went through Head Start. So, I know the importance of what, that that program can provide for our students and for our children as far as early learning. But I'm committed, just like Dr. Maxwell is, that regardless of how we are at this position that we're at right now, that the nine hundred and thirty-seven students that started this program will continue services this year. You know, it's been hard because facts have not been able to come out yet, and I do believe when facts come out and when we're able to present those facts, I think it would be clear after the investigation, and we can see where mistakes were made or how we got to this point. I think things would be a lot clearer, and we can move forward correcting whatever issues that might have got us to be at this point. And I don't want to keep iterating this and keep it going much longer, because we do have other business, but I just wanted to say that, that this has been very hard, especially for me, because I take it personally, because I am the board liaison to the Head Start program. So, it's personal, it's really personal to me. So, saying that, I'm going to move on to the next person, so I don't want to get too much more emotional about it, because I've shed plenty of tears over this since the time I found out. But I think we just need to move on now and try to do the work that we know we need to do to make sure this doesn't continue to happen, and to try to change the behavior of why we are at this place that we are at right now. So, saying that, I think we're in second rounds, Ms. Parker. And the first person in queue for second rounds is Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you. I guess I'll go back real quick, and I guess you can give me the most brief answer, you can. On the training piece, what is the process by which staff, once they see the video, what is the process that they have for asking questions and getting responses back if they have specific questions about their behavior or what's, you know, what's expected or not?
So, Sean is going to answer, Ms. Battle is going to answer the question, but we've redone the training, so there's not just a video, there's a webinar, and there's been some collaboration between Child Protective Services and Ms. Battle and others in the training.
It's my understanding that Dr. Tally asked everybody, I know that he did a thousand teachers at, what's the acronym? Well, the new, when all the new teachers came. Pete, thank you very much. And he, I don't believe that they took questions in that form, and they asked people to submit questions in writing, and he's been, he's developed a FAQ that answers all the questions, and that's been published.
And so, do they have like a number they could call if they have additional questions?
You know, honestly, I think a lot of questions have been coming into all of us. So, questions have come into my office, to Dr. Tally's office, and we have been, we've been letting Dr. Tally's office be the repository for those questions, so that he can develop a Q and A. And one of the other things that we had discussed with Robin Welsh, she was the new person who's over the Office of Accountability, is developing, is working with communications to develop a website, so that there, anybody could go on there and find all the policies and administrative procedures that came out of the Student Safety Task Force, and as well as to go and look at the webinar if they wanted to go there. And we're also working on developing a RFP, because we understand that there are surrounding districts where anyone can go online and take it. So, let's say you had a group of volunteers in your school, and you wanted them to be trained, they could go online, take it, and we would be able to track who actually took the training. And so, we're going to be issuing a RFP for that.
Okay. And then one other thing that keeps coming up about this particular investigation, what is the process for determining whether or not an employee who claims that they reported everything and that they were told to leave it alone or not do whatever, how do you, how have you been able to determine whether there were any whistleblowers in this case or not?
The Head Start?
Yes.
So, each person who was identified in the report was brought into ELRO, and they had a louder mill, they had their union rep with them, and they were given an opportunity to present their side of the story. So, my expectation would be if someone said, "No, I reported," or "I told my, I told my immediate supervisor," that they would have some sort of documentation that they had actually done that.
Okay. And then I guess the final thing I would say is the, the leadership in self-deception, you know, it's just a thought, it's certainly not against anyone who teaches the course, but if we acknowledge that there's a major culture issue in the school district, it might be helpful to have someone who is not within the school district teaching the class to others. You know, some of the feedback that I've gotten is, and I'm just saying, some of the feedback is, I'm not saying it's across the board, but it's been, you know, the people, I wouldn't go to this class because the people who are teaching it are the ones who treat people the worst. And so, I would just, and that even brings me to culture change here. I mean, it really should be at this dais right here. I mean, this is where we should be treating people and treating each other with dignity and respect. And so, I think, I disagree with something I think I heard one of my colleagues say in terms of where the culture and the change happens, it actually does happen at the top, because when the expectations are clear and communicated at the top, then it trickles down into the buildings. And so, I would just suggest that, you know, without regard to personalities or, well, maybe that's not realistic, but my point is, is that I would suggest that if we're really serious about a culture change, that one, we need to define what that is, because I'm not really sure I understand, and we, the board got the book, we got the book probably two years ago. So, I'm not really sure if I understand exactly what it is we're trying to, what's been identified, what we're trying to change, and then as a person who's a parent and who will likely be here around for the next at least twelve years, or maybe not, we, parents should be able to see it. So, it should be tangible, it should be something that you can recognize. So, those are some suggestions I would put forth to the board. Mr. Wallace?
Sorry, Ms. Williams. Thank you, Ms. Vice Chair. Just a quick question before we go on to second readers, to the administration on the budget of Head Start. Just could you give us a quick breakdown of the county contributions to Head Start, the state contributions? And we know that there's six point four, six point five... And we know that there's six point four, six point five million dollars federally, but then a breakdown of that grant and what's given directly to student services, and then what's kind of overhead managerial stuff?
Do you have that right? I know the six point four from the federal government plays.
I don't have the expenditure breakdown here in front of me, but I can tell you what the revenue breakdown is. There's six point four million dollars in federal funds. There's another two point three million dollars in county funds, one point seven million of which is required twenty percent match to receive the six point four. There's one point five million dollars of school system funds, and there's another two hundred thousand dollars from Maryland State Department of Education for a total of ten point four million.
Thank you very much. You go back.
Mr. Burrows.
I wish Dr. Eubanks was here. If the board wants to start the process of rebuilding public and community trust, the first step in doing that is to have the external investigation. That is so important in this case because there's so many layers to this, from the board level, from the superintendent level, from the executive cabinet level, all the way down to the school level. To think that the district could impartially investigate itself doesn't make any sense to me, and doesn't make sense to, to the majority of the public that I've, that I've communicated with. And so if we are serious about rebuilding that trust, or we're serious about owning up to our mistakes, an internal review is not going to be sufficient in uncovering the, the truth and the details that we need. And I don't say this, you know, well, it is what it is, but. And I'll leave it at that. I mean, if we really want to begin to rebuild public trust, it's not going to happen with an internal investigation. Too many players involved in creating this mess are also involved in investigating this mess. And I, I'm confident that they might find themselves to be more innocent than they might actually be. We don't know, and the public doesn't know. And so the only way to really restore public confidence in the process, even my confidence as a board member, is to get someone externally. And so I would like to have the conversation, I'm not going to make any motions tonight around this, but I would like to have a conversation with my colleagues about what does that look like? We have a member of Congress, Don Edwards, who has called for an external investigation. We have several members of the county council who want an external investigation. We have members of the general assembly who want external investigation. And overwhelmingly, everywhere I go, members of the public are calling for this external investigation. And so I, I appreciate you doing a preliminary investigation, Dr. Maxwell. That is not going to be sufficient in restoring public confidence, that's not going to be sufficient in restoring board confidence, at least for myself, and, and what really occurred here. And so I want to move forward. I want our students to continue to be served, and I know we're all committed to making that happen, but if we move forward without holding those individuals accountable, then we'll be right back where we started, and we will not have that public confidence. And so, you know, like I said, I'm not going to make any motions today around it because I want the board to have a conversation about what that would look like and how do we move in that direction?
Ms. Epps.
So I have a, I know that the internal investigation needs to happen, I get that. So I'm asking this more in a, from a general perspective. Generally speaking, what is the responsibility of the principal where Head Start is housed when, upon hearing about, you know, a situation happening with a child?
I think I heard you say, what is the responsibility of the principal when a, when a situation occurs?
Right. So when the, where the, so as I understand it, the principal isn't necessarily a Head Start, part of the Head Start program, but the program is housed in different schools, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thirty-five schools, fifty-one?
Yes, ma'am.
Classrooms?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So if the, if the situation is then brought to the principal of that school, what is the stated responsibility? Does that automatically fall under the everybody report rule or?
Yes, ma'am. So if it's brought to the principal, the principal's first question should be, have you reported what you believe is suspected child abuse or neglect?
Okay. And if that answer is no, or the principal finds that that has not been the case, is there a, a next step of duty or responsibility?
Then the principal can assist the employee by taking them to the phone to make sure that they do report what they have seen as possible neglect or abuse.
Okay. So what if a parent sends an email to the principal? Because a lot of parents, I don't think necessarily, we're a large system, so with, with a lot of layers. And so not everybody understands that although the, the program is housed in a particular school, that the principal is not the Head Start administrator of that particular, you know, in that particular instance. So if, if I get a, like if my child comes home and reports that something happened or I find out that something happens, maybe sometimes the knee jerk reaction is then for the parent to send an email or somehow report directly to the principal as opposed to, you know, the Head Start person or whatever. In that particular instance, what would be the proper response?
Right. And those types of situations occur not just with our three and four-year-olds, but it could happen with a sixteen-year-old, that a parent will come to the school.
No, no, it wouldn't because a sixteen-year-old is not a, is not a part of the Head Start program. I'm specifically talking about.
Okay.
An instance where a parent of a Head Start student sends an email to a principal where the program is housed.
It would be the same that we have to assist in reporting. We would have to report if it comes to the principal at that point.
Mm-hmm.
Then the principal would report the alleged incident.
Okay. I just wanted to be crystal clear about that.
But, or whomever the employee is, because sometimes parents will also report to the teacher, the paraprofessional, or the guidance counselor, depending on who they have that relationship with, but whomever it is, it's our obligation, even if it's me, it's my obligation to then report it to Child Protective Services.
Okay. Thank you. So the, I guess the only other thing that I, I just want to say is, again, with regard to, you know, the, I guess the, the vigor upon which we're coming, we're talking about these issues, please know that this is not just the board, you know, kind of making up stuff. This is what's, these are the stories and the anecdotes that are perme, you know, percolating in the community that then come to board members either by way of email or telephone or, you know, and so I think over the last three years, even though the, we established a communication protocol wherein if something were to occur and I get an email, I'm to then forward it to the CEO and perhaps other high-level staff to be taken care of, often, sometimes, I won't say often, but sometimes I get confused when then there's a follow-up email from the parent because the situation wasn't addressed. So, you, you know, this is a tough situation and everybody, and we do need to take a look at it, and I do think an external, an external investigation would be helpful because I think that there may be pieces, particularly in the hierarchy of communication, where we may be missing it in terms of addressing issues. For a lot of parents, at least that, the parents that I serve in District One, there seems to be a lot of, of the same issues. These, these issues are not in isolation, and there seems to be a lot of issues that even when the executive level is aware is not resolved. So that's something that moving forward, I hope we, we pay close attention to because whatever has been in place obviously needs, you know, needs to be looked at and, and may need some improvement. Thank you.
Okay. I think we're at consent agenda.
Excuse me, Ms. Boston, I buzzed in.
I don't see you lying.
I buzzed in ten times, I didn't know if it went through or not, but I, I buzzed in.
All right, Mr. Blocker.
Thank you so much. Okay. So, so what I'm going to say, that I'm going to, going to be done, before I, before I make the motion that I'm going to make, what I will say again and just remind everybody is that I, I am the student board member, and so my role is very different because I interact with students, my peers, on a day-to-day basis. And continuously and still, I, I still, just recently, today at my, my school, I happen to have a lot of students who go to my school who have siblings in the Head Start program or the schools where Head Start is taking place. And a lot of them have been very nervous about the Head Start situation, and many of the questions that I've been receiving is, what's going to happen? Is my little brother or little sister still going to be able to be in the Head Start program? Are they going to be fine? That's one thing I'm still getting. And so before I make the motion that, that I'm going to make, what I will say is, again, and this goes to all the board members, all of our voting members, everyone can vote, what I'm saying is that our, in order for us to restore the trust and transparency, and in, in order for us to really exemplify and reflect what it truly means to be great by choice, I'm going to make the motion that we have an external investigation, and the reason why making this motion is, again, so that we can not only restore trust and transparency within our community, but because this is the right thing on behalf of our students, especially the ones, again, that are in Head Start who are vulnerable and can't speak up. So I'm going to make a motion that we have an external investigation and that the state and the feds come in and do an external investigation.
So, Ms. Boston.
Yes.
This motion, this identical motion was made at our last meeting, August twenty-fifth, and so in order for this matter to be, again, before the board.
Mm-hmm.
There has to be a motion for reconsideration.
So.
Under Roberts' Rules of Order, sir, a motion for reconsideration must be made by someone on the prevailing side, and you were on the non-pervailing side. So it would have to be one of the members who voted no, voted nay on that motion, to make this motion, if that's, someone sought, someone sought it to do that.
So my question to you is, what are the chances of that happening? And then, you know, it bore to my attention, you know, as long as the motion that was made isn't duplicated, then I can make a similar motion, just as long as it is not the same as a previous motion. So basically what you're saying to me and what you're saying to the students, our students that are in the Head Start program, and to our parents, is that you do not want an external investigation because there's something obviously that we're hiding.
Mr. Blocker, excuse me.
And I am very disappointed about what's going on.
Mr. Blocker, please.
I'm not finished. Thank you so much.
Mr. Blocker, hold on a sec, let me, let me, so I, I apologize. The back, the motion is for an external investigation of Head Start. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And tell me again, Ms. Luci, what, what your ruling was.
So the identical motion was made at our previous board meeting, and under Roberts' Rules of Order, in order for that same matter to be considered, again, has to be made by someone on the prevailing side, and Mr. Blocker was not on the prevailing side on, on August twenty-fifth.
So, and actually, the motion was made, the motion was to amend the agenda in order to take this up, and that motion failed, if we look at it. And so the motion was a motion to amend the agenda in order to take this up, rather than a motion to actually call for an investigation. Is that accurate?
Well, I'll hear, I'll read from the minutes of August twenty-fifth. Resolution number twenty-three eighty-six dash seventeen, point of order is given to Mr. Burrows, was moved by Mr. Burrows and seconded by Mrs. Epps, that the Prince George's County Board of Education hereby agrees to vote as a first reader to request to send notification to have federal and state investigation on all matters related to Head Start issue. The result of the vote was voting aye, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Burrows, Mrs. Epps, Mrs. Jacobs, and Mr. Blocker, voting nay, Ms. Boston, Ms. Eubanks, Ms. Hernandez, Ms. Quinteros Grady, Mr. Valentine, and Dr. Eubanks abstain, Mrs. Roach, Mr. Wallace, and Mrs. Williams.
With all due respect, that was my motion.
And Roberts also says that the motion is substantially similar to the one previously made, that the same rule applies.
Right. Okay. Thank you. All right. So then that motion is out of order. Are we, where are we at? Speaking order? All right.
Remember, point of order.
We're at the, point of order, Mr. Burrows.
So I believe his motion is different than mine. If I, and I could be incorrect, so Mr. Blocker, if you could just clarify, my motion was to have, to request that the state or federal government come in and do an external investigation related to Head Start. I believe Mr. Blocker mentioned state and federal government when he was speaking, but in his motion, it was solely that an external investigation be done, which could mean the county council or a outside investigator, it could mean lawyers. It, it, I think his motion was more broad and mine was, was very, very narrow, that to mention the state and federal government. So I think they're, they're two very different motions.
It's my opinion that the motions were substantially similar. If they're not identical, they're substantially similar, and so the motion, so the rule regarding motion for reconsideration or Roberts' Rules of Order still applies.
Can, can you read the rule? I know you have the book with you, but what, can you just point out, because I have the book too, I want to make sure we're on the same page and we're as accurate as possible.
It's about twenty pages in here on the motion for reconsideration.
I'm not going to do that. Could you modify your motion, please?
Yes. So as Mr. Burrows just stated, my motion, I, I move to make a motion that we have an external investigation dealing with the Head Start situation in our county. This motion is different, as Mr. Burrows has stated.
You don't have to say anymore. Is there a second?
Because he nailed it.
You don't have to say anymore.
Okay, thank you so much.
Second. All right. I moved that substantially difference and I ruled that in order. Go ahead. Discussion.
You said you ruled it in order?
I'm ruling that in order.
Okay. I, I would just say this, I mean, I would just echo my, my last comments. If, well, I'll yield to the, the maker of the motion and then I'll buzz in.
So, yeah, my, my comments aren't going to be any different. They're the same as I stated. Again, I am the student board representative. I constantly come in interaction with students every day, and many of the students who have siblings, little siblings that are in the Head Start program are very upset and worried about the situation, again, which is why I called for that external investigation. And I'll conclude with that.
Thank you. Mr. Wallace.
I just want to ask the, the student board member, Ms. Blocker, I respect his advocacy, and I want to support this motion. But as I said to a couple of folks that have talked to me about my last vote at our last board meeting to abstain, I will not vote yes or no on any motion that does not give me any budgetary implications. So who is going to pay for this internal investigation? Who is going to do the investigating? In terms of student safety, child neglect, child abuse, we have had two externally spearheaded investigations. One of them is the reason why we have this discussion item right now. The federal government investigated us. We have also had an external student safety task force that was chaired by the community college president, someone who's not affiliated with the school system. That's two external investigations. So if anyone that wants this motion to pass, wants a vote from District Seven's representative, give me budgetary implications.
Mr. Burrows.
I would just, to, to, to mention, to respond to Mr. Wallace, when I asked Dr. Maxwell about the Student Safety Task Force relation to Head Start, they had received no documents or any information related to this. So this was outside of their scope completely. And so then you look at the one incident and the one investigation, and that concluded that we had employees not complying with their federal investigation. And so we need to know what happened at the school level, we need to know what happened at the administration level, we need to know what happened at the board level, we need a comprehensive view of the entire thing. As far as who would do it, you know, I think that's for us to discuss, and that's why I didn't make the motion initially. How much will it cost? Once again, we need to have that conversation as a board. I think the motion is broad enough that if it passes, it will give us the flexibility to put more teeth to it as we move forward. But if we But if we want to restore public sentiment tonight and we want to, at least, you know, like I said, if we want to move in that direction, I think his motion is broad enough that if it does pass, we can iron out those details through subsequent motions moving forward. Like I said, Congresswoman Donna Edwards, I spoke with personally about this. She's committed to having an external investigation. I've spoken with members of the county council, members of, and you have too, I know. And so if there's, if everybody, every legislative body possible, and members of the public, members of the community, PTSA presidents are all saying, in order to restore my trust, there needs to be external investigation, we need to have that external investigation. And so while Mr. Blocker's motion isn't specific, I think that speaks to your point. Let's pass this motion, let's iron out those details and figure out how to move forward.
Ms. Epps.
I'm also speaking in favor. I just want to also point out that, I believe it was three years ago when, you know, Dr. Maxwell started, there was also a group that looked at the whole system. And then, you know, to your point, the federal government, the Head Start program itself, investigated our, just as a part of being a grantee, their process. And then the other study that you just mentioned. Perhaps there are other considerations. And I'm even thinking about with regard to Silvania Woods as well as Head Start. There may be implications even in terms of our vetting process when hiring. During this whole process, I haven't heard anybody mention anything regarding our HR processes. And last school year, we had a work session on HR processes, but it really talked about inputs. It didn't go into depth about training or about, you know, development or about viola, you know, the dirty stuff, like violations and how that's dealt with. I think this is an opportunity for us to dig really, really deep or to have someone dig deeper than all of these other entities have dug. So, but if we don't have the, you know, if it's not the will of the board, then we're never gonna be able to get to these things so that we can, so that we can address them. And I think that if this is an opportunity for us to say publicly and also with our partners and to do, you know, to have our partners be available to such an external entity to air their grievances. I mean, there's, if you notice, there's been a pattern, even in terms of public session, public comment tonight. So I hear you about budgetary. I completely get that. But, you know, keep in mind, like, you know, so let's say it costs $600,000. Well, we just spent that on lacrosse.
A follow-up, Mr. Chair. Just a quick follow-up to Mr. Blocker. Is your motion to have this, similar to what Mr. Burrows said last meeting, as a first reader? And so that way we can have that discussion internally, publicly, so that on second reader, we have a very informed decision. We know exactly what it's going to cost, exactly who those county council or state representatives will be. Is your motion, Mr. Blocker, to have this a first reader? And then in two weeks or however long it takes to get the right information, we bring this up on second reader.
Okay. What I'm gonna say first is, I found it funny, you know, how.
So you get, so we're speaking in order, you have to answer, you have to answer his question directly.
Okay, so look, my motion is already stated, plain and simple.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. So I'll go next and I have Ms. Jacobs. Board members, it's easy. It's, you know, to do the thing that's popular. People are angry. People are frustrated. They should be angry and they should be frustrated when we see this. But it's our responsibility to take the right and the productive and the proactive action. And part of that has already happened. Our first responsibility was to mitigate the damages and make sure that the 932 kids in our system got the services that they demanded. That was action number one. We've done that. We've taken care of that. Our second action is to come up with a long-term plan to make sure that those thousand kids have high-quality pre-K for years to come. As we begin to review, the next action is for us to take the responsibility to look at our own internal review process. And we've, that's already on the table. The administration's already talked about that, to do a public review of everything that has happened and why, and to make that public to the board. And if that, if that gives us the answers that we need, then we have the answers that we need. And if it doesn't, we have every right to go to the next level. But to jump from here to something that costs somewhere between zero and $600,000, I guess, was the number that I just heard, or however much, is not, is not responsible. It is something that can respond to the loudest noise of a crisis, but it falls short of thoughtful, wise, and responsible leadership. That's what we require at this time. Responsible, wise, and thoughtful leadership. This motion does not represent that. Ms. Jacobs.
Thank you. I'm thinking of the million dollars that we are currently in the process of spending on the continuous improvement program, which the county council essentially, the board had to agree, but essentially that the county council called for, I think it was Derek Davis, Councilman Derek Davis, not delegate Derek Davis. So we're at, the board has to pay half of that. We had a legislative audit earlier in the year. We just created a new monitoring and compliance unit. And it's true. We, this board voted on a budget that chose not to spend the dollars that we had on 25 bus drivers, chose not to equitably expand pre-K, and chose to spend $600,000 for lacrosse team. I think we can find a way to spend money to do an external investigation process with regard to this issue. We have some very talented staff who tends to find a way to spend money the way we need, they feel we need to. And so I don't think this is a, is a budget issue that is insurmountable, especially in light of the budget we just proved.
Thank you. Seeing all the comments, Ms. Parker, please call to roll.
Mr. Chair, hold on one second, two seconds. Just to clarify, just to clarify.
So, hold on, wait a minute. Number one, you weren't buzzed in. And number two, you had, you had two rounds.
I wanna be publicly clear. This is a first reader.
No, this is, this is, your motion is not a first reader. You already made the motion. It's not a first, this is not a first-read motion. That wasn't what the motion was. The motion is that we do a, matter of fact, Ms. Parker, read the motion back.
The motion is to have an external investigation with regard to the Head Start situation.
Thank you. That is the motion. It's been moved and seconded. Please call to roll.
Mr. Blocker?
Aye.
Ms. Boston? Mr. Burrows?
Aye.
Ms. Epps? Ms. Eubanks? Ms. Hernandez?
No.
Ms. Jacobs? Ms. Quinteros Grady?
No.
Ms. Roach?
Abstain.
Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace? Ms. Williams?
No.
Dr. Eubanks?
No.
Five nays, four ayes, three abstentions.
Thank you. That motion does not pass. We are moving on now to item 5.0 on the consent agenda. And I will yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items 5.1 through 5.5 under the consent agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubank. Members of the board, 5.1 to 5.5 require board approval of proclamations commemorating Red Ribbon Week, National Bowling Prevention Month, National Day of Writing, World Space Week, and Read for the Record Day in Prince George's County Public Schools.
Thank you, colleagues. May I have a motion to approve items 5.1 through 5.5 under the consent agenda? It has been moved. May I have a second? It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Burrows.
I have a comment on behalf of Dr. Beverly Anderson, who said she's on her way to her sister's funeral in South Carolina. She wanted me to commend the administration for their work with the National Day of Writing. She would like to see a report on who participated in it, some highlights from it. And she also wanted to recognize the winners of whatever competitions that might be had with that program, for those winners to come to the board, to be recognized by the board. And once again, those are comments on behalf of Dr. Beverly Anderson.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded that the Board of Education approved items 5.1 through 5.5 under the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Colleagues, as we move on, I actually neglected to mention briefly that Mr. Valentine had a family emergency and had to leave to take care of that family emergency. And he wanted to make sure that that was put on the record. We will now move to item 6.0, which is the Budget Consent Agenda. And I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items 6.1 through 6.10 on the Budget Consent Agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Members of the boards, items 6.1 to 6.10 require board approval of the October 16 expenditure requirements, final payment and acceptance for projects at Barnaby Manor Elementary School, Adelphi Elementary School, Surratsville High School, and Largo High School, and change orders for projects at Potomac Landing Elementary School, Eleanor Roosevelt High School, Eugene Burrows Middle School, Glen Arden Woods, and Fairmont Heights High School.
Thank you, colleagues. May I have a motion to approve items 6.1 through 6.10 under the Budget Consent Agenda?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Jacobs.
Just had a quick question about the bike racks. I know it said the total amount was 38 something, but can you give the breakdown of the bike racks and then the additional WSSC, what those costs were? For Glen Arden Woods, I apologize. It says, um, let me see. It's $38,489.74. And it says, "to, in addition to the addition of bicycle racks and payment of requisite WSSC fees."
Hello? Okay. I can't actually locate that, but it is in the backup. It should be listed. It's about $4,000 for the bike racks, $34,000 for WSSC. That's the total of $38,000.
It's $4,147.50 for bike racks, I believe. Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
And, and the other question was the WSSC? $34,547.
And that was a, what, those were normal fees for WSSC or there was some change?
Yes, if you add enough plumbing fixtures to require additional service to the building, you have to give them a system development charge fee.
And that's something that wouldn't have been known.
No, no, it just happens as they review the design and as the project's in construction.
Okay, thank you.
All set? Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. I just had a couple of questions. On the Potomac Landing project, we have a design increase of about 53%. Can you talk about, you know, the design changes that were made or the scope changes that were made on that?
During the design phase of this project, the project manager walked the facility with the designer and actually identified some areas in that facility that needed to be addressed in order to complete the project for the POD conversion project. One of the projects that we incur, you know, throughout the system for all of our POD conversion projects are addressing the fire alarm system. The way the fire alarm system tied in now, it doesn't really tie in into the older system. And it actually creates two sounding alarms off of it, which is a code violation. So part of this was to try to address the entire fire alarm system simultaneously as we're doing the POD conversion, so we could resolve that issue. The other issue was, I believe, it was a fire alarm, was it? Also the tying in the HVAC upgrades in the POD conversion with the building central heating HVAC system. So part of the design was to add a change order to them in order to facilitate the design and for us to go out and price that as an add alternate.
So can you talk to us about what it means to be a POD and what you're converting it to?
So the POD was an open space classroom that I guess was designed during the 70s throughout our school district. So what we've been doing within the past, I wanna say 10 years, maybe a little bit longer, is actually going through those schools that actually still have open space POD conversions and pretty much gutting them and putting up walls, breaking them off into multiple classrooms, putting in ADA bathrooms, you know, updating the HVAC systems, you know, all the IT systems, smart boards, technology, et cetera.
Okay. My next question is on the Fairmont Heights 6.10 project. And I believe, 6.10, mhm, that on the AIA document G701, it shows that the substantial completion date of September 4th, 2016. Is that correct?
No, that's an error.
Okay. When do we expect that project to be completed?
It's supposed to be delivered for next school year, start of next school year.
So September 2017. Okay. Okay, thank you. I didn't, I thought I had missed something. Thank you so much.
No worries.
Ms. Epps? Ms. Eubanks?
I wanted, I wanted to get someone to talk about the change orders for Fairmont Heights, change number four for structural plumbing and electrical modifications. If you could explain what's going on with that, just so the public will be aware. Thank you.
Do we have that or do we need to get it?
If possible, we can come back and update the board on the changes. My assumption is, is that when you're doing a new school and you require additional service or new service to that facility, there's a fee that is imposed by Washington Gas, WSSC, et cetera, various entities that you don't really capture during procurement, you don't really capture during permitting and et cetera. It's something that you always incur on the construction side.
Yeah, please do. If you don't, just make sure you email that to me so I can make sure my constituents are aware.
We can, we can do that, Ms. Eubanks.
Thank you.
You don't have any additional information?
So the structural changes weren't very much. It was just footings at the canopy entrance. We did some light switches, some plumbing revisions that were required by WSSC. That's really the extent of the change order.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Boston?
This might not be the proper place to bring this up, but I've had a couple of my constituents that live in the town of Fairmont Heights wanted to request a change in the spelling of Fairmont Heights. So at some point, we would like to be able to have that discussion to see how we correctly spell the name Fairmont Heights, which is M-O-U-N-T and not M-O-N-T, since we're building a new building, so. So we can have this discussion.
We need to hurry and get that done before we order the signs.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Folks, seeing all the comments or discussion, I will put. Folks, seeing no other comments or discussion, I will put the vote before you to approve items eight point, I mean, I'm sorry, six point, where am I? Six point one through six point oh under Budget Consent Agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. We'll move on to Governance Second Readers Unfinished Business, and I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction of items 8.1 and 8.2 under Governance Second Reader.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Members of the board, 8.1, 2, 8.1 and 8.2 require board approval of the Fiscal Year 2017 Comprehensive Maintenance Plan and the Master Plan, and feasibility study for the William Schmidt Outdoor Educational Center Final Approval and Acceptance.
Thank you, colleagues. May I have a motion to approve items eight? Do you want to take some of these out?
Yes.
And take them separately? Is that?
Yes.
Is that what I see? Okay. So instead of taking a motion, why don't we start with 8.1 and put a motion on the floor to approve 8.1 and then debate the motion? May I have a motion for item 8.1 under the Budget Consent Agenda, under the Second Readers?
So moved.
May I have a second? Discussion on item 8.1. Is this your discussion, Ms. Epps, or is it 8.2? Mr. Wallace?
Yes, I just had a couple of questions on 8.1. I know we've been here all night, the staff's been here all night, and I appreciate that. So I'll try to be as concise as possible, but I'll go page by page. On page two, a quick question on Arrowhead Elementary School in terms of the line that says drainage repair. Is that to the parking lot? I've gotten several concerns from parents, staff members, administrators at the school that every time it rains or snows, the parking lot floods.
Parking lot?
Yeah.
That is, that is, that is too correct, that flooding.
Perfect. Perfect. Yes. Next question, or I guess this is a friendly amendment to page three. I don't know if that's, Bradyberry Heights, I don't know if that's supposed to be Bradbury, that Y in there, just a friendly amendment there. On page three?
The listing of schools and projects is the document you're going to?
Correct.
Okay.
Just remove that, that first Y there.
Thank you.
Which one?
Where it says Bradyberry Heights?
Bradbury Heights.
I believe that's Bradbury Heights.
Oh, yeah.
Just make a friendly amendment.
Right, right.
Excuse me as I go page by page, trying not to take too much time. Next question is on page 11, at the John E. Howard Elementary and Office Building. Another friendly amendment, I believe that's supposed to say exterior door replacement. And my question is, is this going to be on the administrative office building portion of the building, or is this going to be on the park and planning portion of the building?
This is on the office building portion of the building.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Going through this. Next page, page 15, North Forestville Elementary School. This is a serious concern that I've gotten recently from a parent that has a walker that goes the back way to the school, where the pathway in the back of the school is very secluded, very dangerous, very, it's eroded. So I just wanted to put that on your radar, that I'll be reaching out to your office to see what we can do about maintaining that pathway. I'm not sure if it's on county property or school property, but I've contacted, you know, state representatives and county council representatives as well, and hopefully we can get some updates with that.
And I can tell you, we have, we can have our safety office take a look at that.
Yeah.
They are in contact with the county, so no matter whose property that is, we can, we can take care of that for you.
I love the quick answers. Love the quick answers. Next question.
That was for North Forestville?
North Forestville Elementary School, yes. Next question is on page 19, under recently consolidated Skyline Elementary School. Could you just give me some, some guidance on the requested one hundred and fifty thousand for fiscal year 18, as to why we are using that amount of money on a school that has no students or staff?
That's part of our, we're still, we still have that facility, and that's part of our normal asbestos abatement program, but since it's been closed, we will, before we move forward this in 2018, we will look at it. The idea is the school may be repurposed, it's still being in our inventory, so we need to take care of this issue.
And the same could be said about Forestville Academy and Forestville High School as well.
Yes.
Perfect. That answers another question. Next question is on page 21, under William Beans Elementary School. While it's not listed, I just wanted, once again, to flag for the administration, I've recently got some concerns from staff and parents at William Beans that the PA system is a little spotty in the school, and I've heard cases of teachers not being able to hear the dismissal announcements, and that we've had classrooms of students almost miss the bus because the PA system is spotty. They, they may hear the morning announcements, but the teacher will not hear when students are allowed to dismiss, and then, I'm just trying to avoid the emails sent to transportation when the parents are mad that their students missed the bus. Just wanted to flag that. Next one is on page 22, under Andrew Jackson Middle School or Andrew Jackson Academy. Once again, I just wanted to flag that there were a few concerns from parents from the deaf and hard of hearing program about their television studio that was not able to broadcast the announcements, the visual announcements for the students in the deaf and hard of hearing program, and that the parents and the teachers in those classrooms had to physically sign the announcements as they were being heard through the PA system as opposed to the television studio.
Okay, we can look into that.
Yeah. And, so you answered my question about Forestville. And my last question, yes, page 33, my favorite school that needs to be rebuilt, Sootland High School, on page 33, just to get some clarification on the auditorium. I know that, as everyone knows, if you visit Sootland High School, they got about thirty seats that don't have bottoms. Has there been any discussion on the replacement of those thirty or so seats?
We, we have hired a contractor to replace the seats. The issue with their seats is they no longer make those seats, so it's very difficult. We were looking at maybe removing a few rows to use parts to repair the seats in the middle. However, that school's up for either renovation or replacement, so we really have to look at how much money we're going to spend replacing the seats in the auditorium if that's, if that's the case.
Absolutely, and I would rather, you know, if it takes another year for them to not have the thirty seats in order for next year, they can get a fully renovated auditorium.
Exactly.
I would much rather that be the case. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, administration. I hope that was quick enough.
Thank you. Thank you. Well done, sir. Ms. Epps.
Hi.
Hi.
On page 32, High Point High School. I need to get back there, excuse me for one second. Went someplace else real quick. The electrical upgrade, it says it's on hold, so I just wanted to understand what that means, and considering that, I think there was, wasn't it last year there was like an electrical fire for, I think, one of the, one of the outlets blew or something like that last school year?
I believe that was piece of mechanical equipment, and this is, I believe this is on hold because High Point is after Sootland and Gwen Park up for renovation, so we're taking a stronger look at whether or not we needed to do the electrical upgrades at High Point, because if you spend money on the electrical upgrades down, then we may have a difficult time getting it funded later.
Right, right. So then, in terms of addressing the electrical concerns, is there like an interim step, or does that mean nothing will be done to address some of the, I know?
I'll have to get back to you on that. That's something I need to talk with my electric, electrical force about.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think if, if, if we could like stay in contact or follow up?
Sure.
And work with the new principal there to make sure, because I'm sure that there's going to be feedback coming in pretty soon, particularly like science labs and stuff like that with regard to the electrical equipment. There's, there's still a serious concern.
Yeah, this project, this is our normal upgrade as the school's age. If there's an issue, we will, we will deal with the issue, so I'll look into that for you, and we'll get, I'll get you an answer.
Okay. And then, same page 32, down to Laurel High School. So I know Duval just got their running track redone, and I know Laurel has been crying for their track, and I've actually ran their track and almost hurt myself, the track, and then, of course, the field. If, if, though, if that's not in, it's not even on the lit, like listed as part of their maintenance, then what would you suggest, what are some other alternatives of how that school can address that particular issue?
I've actually looked at Laurel, there were some concerns there a few months ago, and I think what we may end up doing at Laurel is I may be doing that with just operating funds. We're looking into that right now. There were some concerns a few, about two or three weeks ago about some issues at the stadium, so I went out and looked at it, and so we're going to have to address that. And if we put it in here, you're liable, we're looking at 2018, 2019 before we're able to do anything, and I think we need to address that a little sooner. So we're looking at doing that with our operating funds.
That would be amazing. So if, if you can, if we can follow up on that?
Absolutely.
And just, thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Williams.
Thank you. First, I want to thank Wes Watts and his group for coming out and participating in the District Nine Strategic Plan. Although we focused on, you know, the boundaries and school closures, there were some comments that talked about the school and the facilities that they, that the students are living in, and I think it was good that they were able to share with those that actually affect change. And also, I want to thank staff for responding to my boatload of questions on this after first reader. I'm still going through it, but can we just quickly go through the process of, of how something gets put on this, this CMP? Because, as you know, most of our schools are, you know, in that fifty-year stage, and they need a lot of maintenance, and the constituents always ask, well, how do we get, you know, a track fixed or a parking lot handled, or an electrical or HVAC handled? So can we quickly just run through the process of something getting put on this CMP?
Sure. We have a team of, depending on the, the facility, fifteen to twenty people, our coordinators, we have our, somebody that represents all of our entities, all of our shops, myself, and a staff that is actually housed. I have staff, we, we now have an office that, our construction office and our office are actually in the same space, so we have a team that's part of that, and we develop our plan by what we feel we need to do from a maintenance standpoint, from the $2.5 billion deferred maintenance. Then, that's how we come up with this list, that we sit down with our capital programs and look at their, look at what they need to do, and combine the two to use the state and the county money to come up with this list. And what we, even though it seems like it's tough to get on this list, we're out there, we're looking, and for everything that needs to be accomplished, we probably have three or four other things that are, that are in worse shape, and it's, and it's difficult to, to make that measure, but I have people on the grounds. I talked, we talked with our mechanics at the facilities, so we go in-depth in the facilities before we make a decision to get on this list. But I, we're open, if anybody has a suggestion, we will be glad to take a look at something, because if we miss something, then we'll, we'll go take a look at it, because our, our goal is to do what's best for the school system.
And we appreciate that. So it's, it's really not about a dollar value, because I see some things that are low cost-wise, dollar value-wise, and some things that are high, like a million dollars. How do you determine what's on this capital maintenance or the CIP? What, what makes the determination whether or not it gets put on this list versus?
The needs of the system, for the most part. We have, for instance, you'll see so many parking lot projects, and we try to, to take care of things systemically, so many projects of each sort every year, so we continue to improve all our facilities and try not to, to focus on any one entity, but we have a lot of aging facilities that are past a useful life, and we are attempting to take care of the most important issues first. Okay?
Thank you. Ms. Jacobs.
Since you brought it up, I'm begging you to go look at Porter Ridge and Benjamin Tasker, because right now, the community is trying to raise money to get the parking lots fixed. Tasker is in bad shape. Porter Ridge is, I thought it was taken care of, because we sent an email last, a few months ago, and I thought it was done, but it was on the list, as I was told, but if you could just, please have your staff look at it and see where it falls in your categories, because they're in really bad shape.
Okay, we can do that.
The parking lots.
All set? Mr. Wallace?
I'm, I'm done with my list of schools, but I just had a quick follow-up question. And I see a lot of projects that are vastly needed, not only in my district but countywide, and you, administration knows that. Could you explain a little bit of the possible partnership that the school system can have with our state representatives in terms of state bond bills that maybe can fix some of these more minute maintenance issues? I know in the past, if I can do my research, there've been bond bills to repair basketball court, because it's not only used by the school, but it's used by, you know, the public residents in that specific legislative district. And so, in looking at, you know, the concern that I had about North Forestville, whether it's school property or county property, you know, I can, you know, contact my state senator and my delegates to see if they can put in a state bond bill to fix that path.
And I, I can tell you, that was the, the whole point of our educational facility master plan, was to give us a dollar amount, so we can look for alternative financing like bond bills, and because we, right now, our capital program is not funded to complete our educational master plan unless we're able to find additional funding source, so that we are actively working with our capital programs office to look for alternative funding.
Seeing no further discussion on item 8.1 of the new business, second reader, old business, unfinished business, rather, I will bring the motion before you to approve item 8.1 under second reader. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you. That motion carries. May I take a motion for item 1, 8.2 under second reader?
So moved.
May I have a second? Second, thanks, second by Ms. Williams. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 8.2 under second readers. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Thank you. That motion carries. We are now, item 11.0, follow-up items, follow-up of the August 25, 2016 Board Meeting.
9.1.
Oh, 9.1, never mind, forget follow-up items, we're not there yet. Item, item 9.1, first read. I'll yield the floor to Dr. Maxwell for an introduction, 9.1, under new business first readers.
Thank you, Dr. Eubanks. Members of the board, item 9.1 is new business, not requiring discussion, but it is to, for the first reader of the approval of the Chesapeake Math and IT Elementary South Public Charter School application.
Thank you, and I know we have some folks who've been very impatient in the audience, and I almost skipped it after all that. I will please take a motion to accept item 9.1 under new business as first reader. It has been moved and seconded. Ms. Roach.
I just wanted to commend the, the work of the evaluation team that reviewed this charter application. Looking through the report, it seemed like it was very thorough in looking at their application and giving feedback and having multiple rounds of conversations with the charter team. I appreciated the, the evaluation team's amendment that the school makes sure that they have a full-time school counselor to make sure that the students are emotionally and socially healthy and ready for school. That gets to our, our kind of equity piece, to make sure that all schools have that, and also highlighting to make sure, you know, this is a school that should be focused, that is going to be focused on STEM, that, to make sure that for, for students that don't have computers at home, that there's an accessibility plan for, to access the online text and digital resources. So I'm happy with, with the review I've seen so far, and just, it makes us more confident when, when the time comes to vote on it, to have that kind of information, so just want to thank the evaluation team.
Thank you, Ms. Roach. Seeing no further comments, I will put the motion before you. All those in favor to accept item 9.1 under new business first reader, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. We'll now move, follow-up items, follow-up from the August 25, 2016 Board Meeting is posted in Board Docs, as is the Head Start Policy Council minutes. Colleagues, before I take a motion to approve... Colleagues, before I take a motion to approve items approved in executive session, we got a report on an open meeting compliance situation that I am required by law to read to the public and I will do that at this time. In an opinion issued by the Open Meetings Compliance Board and received by the Board Council by Board Council on August twenty-four, two thousand sixteen, the Compliance Board determined that the Board of Education violated certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act related to adequate written statements for closed meetings and adequate written summaries of the events of closed meetings provided in the open meeting minutes. Maryland law requires that a public body found to have violated the Open Meeting Act must announce the violation and orally summarize the opinion at the next meeting. The Board of Education deferred announcing the violations at its last meeting on August twenty-fifth in order for Board Council to review the opinion received on the afternoon of August twenty-fourth. Under state law, compliance with this requirement is not an admission of a violation under the Act by the public body and may not be used as evidence in a proceeding conducted in accordance with section four dash, three dash four oh one of the Act. Specifically, the Compliance Board found and noted areas of non-compliance. Part one, closing statements, number one. Section three dash three oh five of the Act requires that the presiding officer must make a written statement that discloses three areas of, of information. The reason for closing the meeting, a citation of the exception and a listing of the topics to be discussed. The closing statement requirement does not apply to a meeting held to perform a function to which the Act does not apply, such as administrative and quasi judicial functions. Number two, the Compliance Board found that the school board did not comply with the Act when it failed to explain its reasons for excluding the public. The Compliance Board recommends that the board strengthen its procedures around the use of staff pre-prepared written statements. The written statement should provide a precise understanding of the topics that members may discuss in a closed session. Action. The board will revise its closing statements to address the issues noted in this opinion. Part two, disclosure of events in closed session. Number one, the Compliance Board analyzed the public minutes for the first quarter of two thousand sixteen and determined that the school board's disclosure did not comply with either section three dash three oh six or three dash one oh four of the Act. Number two, the pub, a public body that has met in a session closed under three dash three oh five of the Act is required to summarize the session in the minutes of its next open session or in the minutes of the open session held that day. The summary is to include, one, the time, place and purpose of the closed session; two, each member's vote on the motion to close the session; three, the statutory exception claimed as a basis for excluding the public; and four, a list of topics discussed, persons present and actions taken in the closed session. Number three, a public body that has recessed an open meeting to perform an administrative function must include two categories of information in the minutes of the next open meeting. The date, time and place and persons present and a phrase or sentence identifying the subject matter discussed at the administrative function. The school board was required to follow both of these requirements because it closed meetings under both provisions of the Act. Action. The board will ensure that both sets of disclosures are placed in one place in the open session minutes under the, under a heading that clearly informs the public that the information is a summary of the closed session. So, you see those violations and that response that will take place and we will make sure that those actions are taken. And with that, colleagues, may I have a motion to confirm actions taken in executive session on Thursday, September eighth, two thousand sixteen? Did I hear move and a second? Moved by Williams, seconded by Wallace. It has been properly moved and seconded that the Board of Education hereby approve actions taken in executive session on September eighth, two thousand sixteen as follows. Number one, labor negotiations update. Number two, legal matters. Number three, personnel appointments. And number four, administrative matters. All those in favor of this motion, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Thank you. That motion carries. Colleagues, may I entertain a motion to adjourn? It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. I see no discussion, so all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye. All those opposed, please say nay. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.